Additional plagues to the village.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bryce?
Yeah.
Hayden?
Here.
MacArthur?
Here.
McAdinci?
Clearly prepared.
Nivell?
Here.
And Alshon and Abson with those.
So we have an agenda here and does anybody that doesn't anything that they want to delete or add to this agenda? Or is it suitable way?
You did a great job.
So, yes, Liz did a great job.
I will make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Can I make second?
Oh, you can.
Okay. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody hold? So, we're minutes from October eighth, October eighth.
February fourth. You're on the wrong packet.
Second area.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of February fourth, two thousand twenty.
I have a couple errors.
Yeah, she put a motion.
We have to have motions first then we can have this.
Okay, Robert's rules.
He can be more strict there.
Okay.
What do you mean we have?
So I thought we'd make a motion as amended.
There's a motion on it, according to Robert's rules.
Okay, technically, but we don't.
We have an agenda. Okay, I did notice a couple of.
I have various corrections. Under items from commissioners, Commissioner Arthur MacArthur attended, it should be.
And I've got Nivell on there twice.
And yeah, Nivell's twice.
And the second one that says none should be included.
I did not throw any other corrections to that. So. All right. We have a motion. Motion, seconded, to approve the agenda. No second?
I second it.
If you want to amend your motion, say as amended.
Is that correct?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Eight minutes. No public comments? So chairperson's done as well.
Thank you, Aubrey.
Trust in me being this chairperson last meeting. I appreciate that and I'll try to do my best. In that room, this way. And he is not here. Anybody know?
Florida.
How he's been doing?
Good. He's on vacation, yeah?
Good.
Yeah, he's doing good.
So items from commissioners, I see some. Anyone have items from commissioners?
No.
I don't.
I'm just gonna make mention that I have seen a few situations around town and hopefully we will be able to start following up on in terms of potential ordinance violations. For example, there was on Mill Street alone, there was one house towards the western end that we often see a vehicle for sale sitting in front of that house. It seems like that's a fairly constant situation at that location. There's another location a little closer towards town where I believe I've seen an unlicensed vehicle sitting inside there that hasn't moved for a few months now. There's still that unscreened dumpster on Merron Street and I think it'd be good if we could maybe have the guys try to look around and see if they could, you know, in the course of their duties around the village and stuff, maybe keep an eye open for potential situations like that that we may need to follow along on.
You mean the guys, you mean?
Have you, DBW and our village manager feed when he's out? If you notice things like that that you think were a violation or concern you, very helpful to me if you got that information through email or otherwise. Because we, you, we may find out that it's somebody that we've talked to or maybe it's something we didn't notice. But I don't go out looking for violations. I operate on the basis of violations that come to me, somebody tells me about. I've had maybe one or two that I've done on my own, but.
Well, like I said, in some cases, some of these are rather obvious and maybe if it's noted, maybe addressed. But yeah, I will take note of that and see if they persist in those locations. I think Liz is already aware of the one on Merron Street.
Is that the frontier mutation?
Merron Street, in the south edge of Merron Street.
Almost, all of Merron has got something going on.
Yeah.
Let us see something.
And I noticed also, you know, the dumpsters are supposed to have surroundings with actual gates or doors on the front. For some reason, one of the apartments on Granger Road. They did a decent job of putting up doors or gates on the front, but just busting one apart not too long after. But it wasn't set and then one around, you know, anyway, might be something you want to look at.
Which what is it, where is that?
Rosen Apartments.
Rosen Apartments on Granger Road.
Roseanne?
Yes, it's the only apartments on Granger Road. It's about half mile, less than half mile down.
I did know it was Roseanne.
There used to be, currently group apartments.
That's what I noticed.
Ownership and next to name that with something to appeal to.
His name is Roseanne? Oh, gotcha, Rosen. I didn't say his name's Roseanne, that must have been a.
Life. Like Rosen.
What is it?
All right. Anything else? All right, new business, master plan. Do you have some comments you received? Comments?
Those would be the comments from Oakland County Commissioner and the road commission.
You add those last. Any new comments from any other sources? So. Have you all had a chance to look at these?
Yes.
Does anything really pop up that you need to catch your attention that you need to work on?
Sure.
Yeah.
All right. I think for me, one of the key ones that we should correct is the one they brought up on page three of the county's report.
Page three?
Yes.
The map?
Yes. In particular, the item that says, error, question mark, corridor changes, one change of downtown and a possible right-of-way extension is natural preserve. I think that right-of-way, I think that those are things that somehow got miscoded because they have, the bottom part of Church Loop is now coded red instead of being white like it should. And then there's this little extension going into the nature preserve that is white.
I was wondering, this single family, what is that?
I actually have a larger copy of the future land use map if anyone finds that helpful.
Is that what you're talking about though, the one that it says single family back there?
Yeah, there's the guy, things that, but you can see here.
No, there's an error, question mark, one, two, three, four.
Yeah, the error one and then which one? Oh, this guy? Okay.
There are two corridor changes.
So here's the.
But Ethan had mentioned another one too.
Does this help anybody? See it bigger?
Yeah, there it is, you can see it and it's glorious. So, this is what we're talking about. There's somehow that extension of Church Street down into the nature from the east of right-of-way. This doesn't exist.
Yeah.
Well, there is the one.
And also the bottom Church Loop.
An easement there in that corner.
Has turned red and that should be white because that's a street, that's not.
Okay. There's the one piece in the middle of that that is the unmarked, unplanted, on can't figure out whose it is that is white, that is correct. For some reason, that shows two instead of one.
It doesn't show two, we just show.
Like the bottom, well.
That little center piece, that's.
The bottom of it is correct. And I don't remember it being that large.
It was not that.
That's the piece that does not have a parcel number and has no identity and that is correct.
Well, why do, why can't we zone that as nature preserve?
Because it's not ours. It's an unzoned.
This right here is what you're talking about?
If it's somebody's private property, you can't make it nature preserve.
If it's private property, we can zone it as nature preserve.
Yeah, but is it that large?
If it's private property, you can't, you can't name it something else. Well, I mean, I think it already was zoned as nature preserve in the previous master plan.
It certainly was. In fact, what it showed on our previous versions is that from this creek, this way is park and from that creek, this way is school property. So this is kind of a radical change that maybe or you not exist.
What's the date on that map?
Date on that map?
So there's no parcel ID that goes with that?
It's 1012, two, three.
Nobody gets taxes on it?
Right, it's found that way and that's correct.
So someone owns it and it's never been taxed out?
No, no, there's no ID number on it. They searched and searched and searched and Bill's the one who did the bulk of that because it finally came to light.
Then I got to ask a question then. How can we then take the corridor piece? The, the old railroad section, how come that can be coded, how come that is coded here as nature preserve? That's not.
It's not as nature preserve.
It is, look at, look at the new map. The ITC corridor here is coded.
You mean this map here?
Yeah, it's coded as nature preserve along with the piece of property that we own.
Yeah, it's wrong.
I think that that came out of a council meeting.
Correct, because I remember that discussion.
Incorrect.
Right.
This is ITC corridor, belongs to ITC or DTE if it's, but pretty sure ITC. Portisic or DTE, long distance. But it's not village at all. Never happened before.
Two or one change to downtown and it's possibly right-of-way.
And of course, it continues across the rest of the land.
Can't you just condemn it?
I don't, I don't believe between county and Bill, I don't think it ever was resolved. I think it was still in motion. I don't know what you have on the way of that and there record wise, but that's the last I remember, doesn't mean that's the last there is. The last I remember is it was an unidentified parcel and no owner could be found, there was no parcel number. And Bill was going back and forth with them down there and trying to figure it out. That's the last I remember.
Then how if there was never an owner, how did someone decide that, oh hey, this, this piece belongs to somebody?
I think it got landlocked when that other brown portion from the school, see how they're kitty-corner? That's what happened, I think, when they ended up buying the hat, like the other half didn't get with, I don't know.
So it should have went with the original purchase from the school?
Not necessarily, I don't know, but that's when I think that happened.
If it would have went to it, it would, it would still have an ID number.
Correct.
And maybe that's why you did it?
I just don't understand why someone just decided that somebody owns it though, that little select piece.
Has somebody been in contact with Bill Thompson, the assessor?
I don't know, that was, like I said, that was weird.
That's where I would start is with Bill Thompson and Brenda.
Well, I'm sure there's something in.
So they're saying this is vacant?
Are you going off this one?
This map.
Oh, just that little.
I'm going off this guy, this is our, I don't.
That white space.
Delos, is your opinion, we cannot zone any area as nature preserve if we do not own that property?
Well.
Because it's.
If, I don't know that you have a zoning classification of nature preserve, you have the name of the facility.
We have natural preserve is what we have.
As a zoning classification?
Yes.
Well, this is future land use, whereas it'd have to be a master plan. I'm looking for the existing land use.
Oh, conservation, recreation slash preservation.
But on this one, it's called natural preserve.
This was the.
The future land use is called natural preserve.
Oh, yeah, the, in the future one, this is just a recommendation of what they wanna.
Yeah, future land use is just calling it natural preserve.
But isn't this from our prior master plan?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't, now I don't think so we changed them.
I'm looking at the February twelfth draft that I have electronically.
Yes, this one.
Natural preserve, yeah.
And these are just recommendations that's from Oakland County.
Things that are questionable.
If that wasn't in our prior master plan, they're recommending that it be in this one. Does that make sense? And I didn't bring the old master plan, so I can't tell you what we have there.
I haven't had the old.
Oh, I'm just wondering what we called it?
Um, I mean, some of it are obvious that when we sold the school property, we rezoned it. I mean, that needs to be changed. I mean, some of them are, others are questionable.
It just says natural preserve. Natural preserve areas are significant natural features in the village, so it says wetlands and oil woodlands. Because of environmental limitations associated with these natural features, these areas are not suitable for zoning.
Okay, okay, don't worry.
Appropriate uses for natural preserve areas include parks and conservation uses and other uses that do not require permanent construction of buildings or other structures. However, small scale buildings or structures related to a park or conservation use such as gazebo, bore locks, or trail systems are appropriate in natural preserve areas. That's what it says in their section about natural preserve for that.
That's what it did say until.
That's in, that's in the current?
But that's land use, not zoning.
Maybe that, I think they might have stripped out some.
What our zoning is would be in our zoning, not in this.
Which page are you on? I'm not even looking on page nine. Future land use plan, page twenty seven.
Do we have a zoning or that's, that's where we'll see whether we have a zoning? Did I bring my whole bag of goodies?
Okay, yeah, they stripped out a part about trail and stuff like that.
You were there when he was.
Yeah, you were right there, yeah.
So would I.
But I'm just saying, we do have a zoning, a zone on our master plan called natural preserve. And that's why I think just applying a, saying this falls within this zone does not necessarily restrict. I mean, we do put restrictions on what can be done in this.
That is what we call it.
But there's nothing built right now, we say, hey, this is zoned as natural preserve. If there is an owner, they want to do something, they may do the variance to build like a permanent home or something.
We found out.
But Eric, that's all swamp there anyways, isn't it?
It is swamp.
Yeah, so, but clearly that there's no owner, it's sitting there, unknown. Yeah, and I think it's very clear if you take a look at the other.
It's unnumbered, doesn't mean it's unknown, there is a possible owner, we don't have the number to find that.
But if you own a swamp and you say, hey, I want to build something in the middle of the swamp, there's already protections on wetlands that they won't be allowed to do that anyways. And so I don't think that it's a, I don't think it's necessarily inconsistent for us to zone that as natural preserve. Since we know what it is.
So Dale's question was, do we have a zone for it? Yes, we have a zone for natural preserve.
And can we rezone things without notifying the owner?
Well, like I said, it's the, yes, I mean, I think.
I don't understand why we need to.
We, we do.
How do you think that is existing already?
His grandfather being in front of us.
Right.
It would not mean anything if you don't give proper notice.
Yeah. It's like saying we can rezone to residential. It's like saying we can rezone to residential.
So I don't know, we can't address it till we know who the property's ownership is.
But the thing is, is anything that's already existing, if it didn't conform to the new zone, it would be legal non-conforming. So it doesn't affect anything that's already there, even if you change the zone.
So from, from this point forward.
But in the last, there's a plan in the next zone.
From this point forward, one person will speak at a time, please.
Okay.
And when somebody's speaking, don't interrupt them unless they allow you to, right?
I'm sure that's part of the Robert's rules of orders, but anyway. So who want to express the opinion first?
So I'm just kind of reading through, other than the one that we're talking about. The first ones seem like obvious mistakes. I mean, two parcels were changed from single family to village residential. Seven were changed from village residential to single family. Two, I don't know, so those are things that I can follow up with McKenna on. Now, one that is correct is third from the bottom that says school property was public and changed to M15 for our commercial and that is correct, but everything else.
Very, very.
Fletcher and E.
Yeah.
Yeah, and this was the page I asked you.
Yeah.
But this, at the bottom, it says school property, and change to single family.
Exactly, yeah, so.
Would be, you know, our elementary schools, how is that possible?
So I think this is something that I will follow up with Sue Cronander, other than the other one that we're talking about, the two corridor changes. I'll need to know what to address, how to address those.
I don't know if anybody, if you can see, but you can see, this is from the two thousand eight master plan, our future land use map there. And it does show that in that, our current active master plan from two thousand eight.
You can show them Larry, we got one.
This is the current master plan.
Yep.
Not, not the new one?
No, it's not.
Okay, oh, you got it, okay.
Yeah, we got the old one, so you can show them.
You can see, you can see that it was not taken out separately, it was already previously considered zoned as natural preserve in the future land use plan from our current master plan. And the church loop is not zoned red as anything special, it's white, which means it's right-of-way or whatever. So I, so I think that.
What's this, what he's looking at?
Those changes there are in error. I think that it should look like it did in the previous master plan for that, those two pieces right there.
Or is that an error and when they updated and fixed it, they caught it?
This map that is, that we're looking at, if this, this title is part of the map that says future land use. So that doesn't mean that any of those parcels are zoned.
Right.
The way they're described on there. It's what somebody has thought it should be.
That they're recommending.
Yeah.
But our, our previous master plan had future land use.
But you got different maps, you've got a map, it is what they're zoned, what the current master plan for them is. And then you have a future one, which could be completely different.
And, and this, this is the future land use from our last.
When you're doing a master plan adoption, you can't just change the zoning of a piece of property.
Yes, you have to do that afterwards in the zoning.
You have to do it at some point in time by the right legal means. And that's where someone says something about notification and everything. You have to notify, you have to have hearings, you have to, and have, and have to have action of the council to make the change. Okay. It's just, I mean, when they point out that these things are in error, if somebody, when they were drawing this, thought that this whole area, including the little squared thing, should be one thing, that could be correct. The fact that it's not now would be a different map. You see what I'm saying? So, and I don't know this well enough to know which is true, but we're talking about what the future of this would look like and I can see if someone's, someone, if there's an area in here that's zoned different than the rest of the property, it would be a logical thing to think, why isn't it all zoned the same way? And that's what this change would look like. It says two parcels were changed from single family to village residential. If all the rest of this is village residential, why isn't that village residential too? So it could be the opposite way that they're pointing it out. So one thing I want to point out is, on all previous maps I've looked at, these, this area that shows on the two thousand eight, two thousand fifteen map.
Two thousand six, two thousand seven.
All right. Is the area that's south and west of the creek was school property. And the area that's east and north of the creek was village property on all the old maps. This shows it as village property in a straight line for some reason that ignores the creek because if you look at the other parcel maps, it roughly tried to follow the creek separating the village park from the school for school property. This is not that way.
And that's a future land use, so at one point.
It's the old one.
But it's a future land use, it is not a zoning.
Okay.
So you can call it whatever you want and color it whatever you want.
Okay.
At one point, I know conversation was to use, to get that land for the school, conversation was with the school, you know, who would own it, maybe that was the vision, was to make it consistent, I don't know. But it's, it's not a zoning, it's a land use.
If I, if I recall when we were, because I think you, I don't remember what point you came on during the whole master plan process, were you through there from our start?
Some of it.
Okay, because I don't remember if anybody brought to our attention that they wanted to change the designation, the zoning of the bottom portion of the church loop or any mention of changing that one parcel like it shows on the map now. So I don't think that's anything that the planning commission, I don't recall ever in the planning commission that top they're coming up saying, oh, we need to change these two pieces something different. So I think that.
We never did.
This map here is an error and I think we should use the same zoning how it shows in the previous master plan because we did not change that from the old map onto this one. Now, I think we did talk, I'm not sure on the quarter ones, I think we did talk about some of those other things about maybe incorporating the one parcel to be consistent and things like that. I do remember some discussions about some of those. I know for a fact we said for future land use, we wanted to move away from public and have everything zoned so it could be utilized better in the future, especially considering things like the schools closing and being sorted off. So that's why we took to go away from public despatch and I remember we did that. I don't recall the gateway stuff, whether we had talked about changing that along M15 or not. But I think it does kind of make sense though. Actually, I think I do remember talking about that, is that it made sense, the whole South Street thing with A and W and all made sense to consider that part of the case. What do you propose?
Well, I, I think out of all the things that they pointed out there, I think most of the changes that they mentioned are changes that we did deliberately make to the map other than the one that has the question about the corridor and the South Street, or the Church Street loop piece. So I think everything else in there is stuff that we did make the decision to change.
What about school property with public and change to single family?
We did make that change. I remember we talked about that, about eliminating public as a designation because we said it's locking us into a particular use and if same thing happens in the other schools that happened with the one school, then we're locked in and we can't do anything with that property. Nobody could develop it because it's zoned public. So that's why we said.
But it didn't need to be zoned.
Well, public is anarchy.
That's why we have the future land uses proposing, we don't have public as a land use within our village, we only have single family. Right now, it's a school, but if that ever changes, it's already zoned.
Is it a school now?
It's a school now here.
It's already zoned if you weren't going to zone it public.
Uh, single family residential.
Even though a school's on it?
Even though a school's on it?
There's a school on it. If the school closes and sells, somebody could buy that property up and redevelop it. If, if, having it zoned as single family, we discussed this, having it zoned as single family does not prevent it from being used for school. All it does is it enables a different use should the school ever leave and not be.
But it, it, it only allows those uses that are within the single family designation. What if I, as a developer, come in and I want to use it for something that's other than that?
Commercial.
Yeah. What if, what if I want, what if I want to make a lodge out of it or something? You know? And that would then be a commercial use. And you have now zoned it's single family.
That's because that's what we, as planning commission and as community, said we would like to see this developed as single family residential, should it change in the future.
I don't remember that at all.
The other one was changed to commercial. The other school was changed to commercial and.
Which makes sense because it's in between M fifteen and the village there, and the library is right there. So I think that designation for that piece of property as commercial makes sense because it's right on M fifteen. This is a piece that's tucked up behind the corridor properties and is adjacent to a lot of existing residential area.
I think you're putting more emphasis on this map and what's there than you should. This is a future land mass. It is, it is whatever the majority of the people who are reviewing it see at that moment. Nothing more than that.
That's right.
So if, if this is generally correct, I mean, like this, we're coming back to change this one parcel in the middle of that, makes no sense to me at all, unless there's some view that you want to start having single family or village residential, whichever, in there. Then, of course, you should designate whatever you want to do that way. But even if you did that, it wouldn't make any sense to have that weird shaped parcel be the choice. So this is not like what, what your current master plan is for those properties, it's a future land use.
That's right.
But you're getting really specific with it, is what I'm trying to say, Larry.
The only thing I was talking about.
And so if you're doing that, I mean, it's, this is not a small task to rechange this and to redo what these things are. We could be here six more times.
The only, the only change I'm proposing that we do to this particular future land use map that's in our current master plan is to change those two little pieces that I.
Are you talking about something that applies to what we're talking about here?
I, I think we might be. Because if you turn the page.
Can you tell me what page number we're talking about?
It's page four, second paragraph, the first full paragraph. Paragraph two.
Okay.
And this is my question, it doesn't matter what it is, we can still change it. Yes. In our last one, it was a school, in this one, it is commercial, it's okay. We can bend and grow as things come up. If the school closes, we make that decision at that time. Versus changing something with a vision, we don't have what our vision is going to be.
Well, that's kind of.
Right now, we think it's a school.
That's the kind of the point that I'm trying to make with this.
Right.
Is if you have something that's a school now, the underlying zoning doesn't matter a whole lot. But if you start making a suggestion for it, that, or, or do the rezoning for a piece of property and make it, make it single family. And I'm a developer who's coming in to want to build a lodge, a commercial enterprise. I'm thinking, oh, no, I'm not doing this. I'm not going to go in and try to change this community and have them rezon my property in the expense of like six months to a year and going through that process, not knowing where I'm going to end up. I'll just go someplace where I get a piece of property that's compatible to what I want.
That's right.
And I have concerns deciding what the school's property should or shouldn't be in the future when they're the ones that would be selling it without having a discussion with the school.
Right.
I mean, I want to pitch a school a sale that can't go on.
No stake.
I don't feel we can make these decisions.
Their, their control with that is when they're, when they're handling the sale. When they're handling the sale, they find out how you want to use it. That doesn't buy them to anything, but at least it gives them an idea. And if they don't like it, they can exercise them. Once they've sold the property, they're out of it.
Right, but I'm saying like right now, if we say this and this and this are uses and this and this and this isn't, when they go to sell, they now have cut off half of their prospects, possibly. By also making that decision until we've talked with them and it's, they're, I don't know. Like I said, I don't feel we should be making decisions without figuring it out before we change it.
Okay, yeah, I, I would like to say though that as a master plan, where, the goal of the master plan is not to accommodate some future developer that may or may not want to put up a lodge or some other commercial development that would be for profit for him. The goal is to try to come up with something that would make sense in terms of what our community wants and what's best for the community. A lodge might be a great use for a commercial enterprise for somebody who buys it and makes money on it, but it's not necessarily going to be in the best interest of the people living around it immediately adjacent to that property or the rest of the people within our community. I think our choice of land uses, in the future land use, looking at what we would like to do or like to see happening in our community is to say, hey, within this area, it makes sense to have a little more commercial development. Within that area, it makes sense to, to look for more residential development because we want to have, you know, increase our residential footprint in the area too, and not just have just all commercial. So I think that we have to kind of balance the, the good of the community also when we're looking at that. Not only look at it from the developer's side, but also look at the community. What would the community like to see that in the future? Do they want to see a lodge or do they want to see more homes? And I think that's what we're looking at too.
Do they want a school in the village?
That's the obvious thing to me.
No.
If we, we, I don't see how we've been making, I don't think we did. I don't remember this at all, ever. But maybe the village council came up with this idea, but. No, that, that can't, this came from the planning commission. I remember we had discussions on the.
Eliminating the public. Changing the school to residential.
I think we had said we wanted to eliminate public. Perhaps it was McKenna that made the suggestion for that, and we accepted what they had proposed. Without really thinking it through, which I don't know.
So what I'm trying to say is that it seems that we can't very well just change the school zoning to residential without talking with the school district about it.
And the zoning board.
And the zoning board, but, and I don't see how that's.
The zoning board doesn't do anything.
A reasonable thing to do.
If you're going to change the zoning of it?
No.
Planning commission recommends zoning approved, correct?
No.
No?
No, the council approves.
Yes.
The zoning board of appeals doesn't have anything to do with it.
Well, council is the, yeah, exactly what zoning does.
Actually, just, just.
I mean, you really, even though you're sitting in both seats, you have to, there's a distinction between the two.
I, I still think we're overthinking this, as Dale said, because all the rest of these changes, this is, as he, as was mentioned, this is a future land use. This is like, hey, we would like to someday see this whole area be a residential area, maybe that'll be commercial, whatever. It's future land use. Once, this is just, this is in our current master plan like this. Once the master plan is finally approved and moved forward, our next step is to then revisit our zoning ordinances. That's the point at which we look at this and scrutinize a little more closely and say, okay, based upon our proposed future land use, do we need to make any zoning changes? Or do we want to make any zoning changes? Do we need to change our existing zoning ordinances and uses and such? So that's the whole process that we need to do in the next phase. This is just a proposed future land use, this doesn't lock us into anything, it's a plan, it's a proposal. It's when we come to the actual zoning ordinance review, that is an upcoming task for us, and we have quotes in front of us for that, that, that is when we'll take this and look at it in light of our current zoning ordinances and see what we, changes we want to make to our current zoning, to see if and how far we want to go in going towards that. Does that make sense?
Man.
Man.
Go ahead.
Okay, the only reason we were just going in depth with that is because you brought it up. I think we all realized it was just for future, you know, just suggestions. We thought you were making a point to change something now.
I was, no, I, I was talking, I think we should change this one point that I think is in error because it is not consistent with the previous.
Okay, so that is the point.
And, and the Oakland county did point out and say, is this an error? Because it looks like it was an mistake.
All right, so that's what we need to.
That's the only thing I'm saying, is the one part that they said it might be an error, I think, I think they're right.
Okay.
And I'm saying that's the only thing I was talking about changing.
You're talking about the top one?
I'm talking about this one right here where they say, error, question mark, two corridors. Because it doesn't make sense to turn a street into a.
Right.
Zone designation. And this tiny little sliver of land that's in the middle of a swamp, it doesn't make sense to do something different as a road right of way as opposed to just leaving it as natural.
Is that at the Red Barn?
It's just south of Red Barn. And actually, it's on the other side of the creek from the Red Barn too.
The barn, but the barn property.
Yeah.
Both sides of the, sub creek there.
Okay.
So, on the subject of the school, the.
So what, what do we change it to?
The person that, Scott Lee, the planner.
Put it back the way it was in the previous map with those two tiny little pieces, that's it. The, the red becomes white again, and that tiny little sliver in, in the natural preserves returns back in the natural preserve, which is what it was before. As we're talking about, just that tiny little sliver and this tiny little sliver.
Because in the previous zoning, it was, the actual zoning map indicated that was green.
Yes.
I mean, it was, it's been that way, it's been zoned that way for.
Indicated it was what?
That it was a natural preserve.
That it was a natural preserve.
Yeah.
In the old zoning map, that, that was approved.
Because in this one, you see the straight is where there's no sliver, sort of out there.
That's what.
And that's all I'm saying, is we just make it like it was there. Because we did not change anything in this area of the map. So I think that this change that's in this map is an error because we didn't do anything when we moved forward.
You're talking about was the planner's error?
I believe so, yes. Because I know we never would have.
They've proven zone.
Make a note of it, no matter how long. The difference is, because that's, that's the kind of thing that when we go back to them with.
Yeah.
I want to say to them, here's, here's an error you need corrected. Now, we want to make a change, because they can legitimately charge the village for any changes in this that we make after all this process. They went through now and we want to change it around, rename it, renumber it, re-whatever it. They're, they're legitimate in charging us to do that. If it's something that wasn't there and we didn't ask for, and they did, that correction, they should just do. And whoever talked to me on the phone agreed with me on that, when we were talking about it. But we have to be clear when we're asking for those things. So that, is that the only change there?
That's the only change I would suggest that we make to that map.
Does everybody agree with that?
Yes.
Really?
Okay.
I mean, if you do.
You think there are two changes there? Well, the.
Those two were pointed out.
And one, they are pointing out there's two changes, yeah.
What's the other one?
The fact that they have Church Street as a.
Yeah, but they have a reference together right here. That's why I said this is, this one little block is the only thing.
Dale was asking, what's the other one? And the other one is that they have Church Street designated as a gateway.
Yeah, and how do you designate a street as gateway?
Just right here.
Yeah, they were talking about right of way in the middle of the make, natural preserve that is changed.
Yeah, they got, the South End Street that got changed.
Is designated as gateway, when it's just a street. Downtown, or whatever.
That's a, that's a, red thing is a street?
Yes.
Yeah, that's Church Street. And this is South Street, and somehow they've added this section of Church Street into the gateway part.
Well, the red part of Church Street would be Will's property that butts up against the school, and that is correct.
No, the street itself is not gateway.
The street itself is designated red or gateway.
Well, I can't tell, this little thing is.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, is on previous map, we have the street as white. So back to the error. On the new map, it's red. The street is not, it's an area, it's a street.
The county people.
I don't see the street as red, and you can't see it.
You can on the bigger map, yeah.
Right here, the, this section of Church Street is designated.
Just in front of the.
Post office.
Around that whole curve, the post office.
Right, that would be. But you're saying just simply that tiny little block of the street is to change, not just change.
Skinny strip that is the street should not be red.
So you're talking just to change that tiny little strip, not to change the red on the side of the strip and keep it gateway? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Well, the gateway refers to.
That's what I tried to ask.
Gateway refers. Because they somehow, they turned this section of the street to match that color, and it's like, no, it should still be a street.
The gateway refers to not the street itself, it refers to the parcels that are on the, the side of South Street. Somehow they've got this.
This street, just the section.
Section of Church Street, and they're going into South Street as designated gateway, when it's just street. Doesn't belong there. That's something that the county planners. So when you say that, I, I don't need to be straightened out. I, I understand the, the street part, I got that. The two parcels that you're talking about are.
Yeah, in the previous plan, this was all.
Okay, yeah, that one I got, the sliver, I got that.
Got the sliver and.
What is that?
That's the, that's the.
Okay, I got it, yeah.
This question needs to be answered.
That's the only thing I'm suggesting is that we.
Well, the arrow went, right, the arrow went a little skewed there.
That's why I was thinking they might be on the side of the street.
What the heck, I got it. And I agree.
We're there now.
So, okay, so, and the other question is whether the school property could be designated as single family.
No, we're going to do that later.
What do you mean, we're going to do that?
It, once we start doing the, the zoning ordinances, that will come up again, and then that will be discussed then.
Yeah, the county actually said that that was a valid change. They did say something to that effect, yes.
Well, the thing is, there is no public zoning, uh, future land use, there is no public in the legend. So our public is gone, so they just simply changed it. It's not a zoning, it's just a land use.
So.
There is no public, we've removed public.
So the library is not public anymore?
Right.
Why not?
Because.
Because it's locked in.
Public is gone.
Then that's the, the, the commercial.
Gateway. Quarter and the gateway's no longer.
Okay.
And the gateway's.
Gateway.
So gateway doesn't refer to a use of a property just for the location.
Yeah, and let, and let me just, if I may read what single family residential is in our new master plan, this is what it says. Areas planned single family residential have the character of more recently developed single family neighborhoods. These areas tend to have larger lot sizes than other areas of the board. Appropriate land uses in single family residential areas include detached, single family units and uses that can be compatible with single family buildings such as schools, churches, municipal and civic buildings. So already, it, you can have a school in a single family residential zone, but you can't have a single family residence in the public zone. That's why we said, okay, let's reclassify what would be the most appropriate usage for that. I, I, I think that, for me, I think that looking at where it lays in the village, I think single family residential makes more sense in the commercial quarter because the commercial corridor is focused along M fifteen, and this is removed from M fifteen. But obviously, it doesn't preclude other types of uses too.
It wasn't ever considered a commercial quarter.
That's right.
What would you consider Mill Street?
Uh, gateway. And it's actually zoned, that's the way it's shown on there too.
Well, this is downtown.
Yeah, that's, yeah, the very center part of that, but portions leading in are gateway and a portion heading out towards Crescent Hill, that goes to the Ritzback Residential.
This, um, this kind of justification or, if they, Scott, I think it was Scott.
Scott Green.
He seems to be the one who wrote this plan or video. He does suggest that the school district, they say it's ownership of the buildings. I think that means. What I wanted to ask about that is, has the Fletcher intermediate property, building property sold for sure? The person that owns, Bedrock owns that.
That's amazing.
Yeah. And we resumed it.
So why would they say, unless they're talking about the two.
So why would they say, unless they're talking about the two elementary schools in Harvey's last name?
I think they were referring to those for future land use.
As two schools.
Yeah, if they go away in the future.
I thought maybe they were talking about that school and that school, but
Well, that is
I guess there's two schools.
There's two, there's Bert and Harvey.
Well, Sherman Court is still school property as well. Were they referring to the school there for five minutes?
So what, what they're talking about is that with the new elementary school on Oakwood Road and the middle school and high school just south, and he said, that's what he said there, that this school here might become obsolete.
Correct. And so that's why they said the future land use could be
That's why they are saying that this is a reasonable
No, no, it's not.
And again, I, I have no, no problem just saying that the future potential use of that, but can, can we tell the property owner that we're going to put your piece of property, whatever zoning, future zoning, this is what we want to establish it to be? Can we tell the school that whenever, when they go to either publicize, to sell it or do whatever, somebody's gonna look at it and say, well, the, the future use of that is presidential?
That's what this does. This tells future buyers what the village believes that property should be in the future. Doesn't mean they have to do it.
Correct.
Because when they, when they buy it, they're gonna research and find out, how is it zoned today? If it's zoned public, they're gonna come in and ask for a rezoning to whatever it is that they want. Mind what I was saying to you earlier is if you say, we're gonna zone it residential, if you know that that's, you've decided, this is just all gonna be houses, we're not gonna have any commercial, nothing anywhere else, we're gonna fight it to the end, then you say so. You know, they know that they're gonna have the battle, it doesn't mean you're gonna win because, you know, it can be turned over in court. But absent that, in, in most places, you don't, you should not, I don't believe you should lock yourself into these things based on what you're thinking at the moment because your thinking could change. Somebody comes in with a creative way of using this that all of a sudden makes it available for all of the downtown area to have the proper amount of water and sewer to, to operate as commercial properties at no cost to anybody in the village. I'd be shocked if somebody here turned it down, you know? I mean, because that would just be such a modern move. But that's why you want to leave some creative people that have some money, some open space. So, because if they sense, if they sense that they're gonna have a fight to develop this, they're gonna leave. I know, because I, you know, I did it in Independence Township, I drove developers out because I told them, setting in meetings, you come and put, bring us anything you want. But while there's a dollar left in the treasury and you come and put, wanna put a Kmart on that piece of property, we're gonna fight with you. We're gonna fight with you to the Supreme Court and if we, and if we lose and we have some room to come, go to the Court of Appeals, you know, that, we're gonna go because we don't want you here. You know, and if you, if, if you feel that strong and you have the backing to do it, you know, you know, the person has to decide, am I gonna spend a hundred thousand dollars on the hope that six judges are gonna see it my way? Most of the time, no.
If, if anything, I'd say a step towards single family residential is opening it up for more than it can currently be used as public. Because right now, as public, it is extremely limited in overall community. That's why we had to already rezon that piece of property just so they could develop it as a commercial enterprise. So by making it at least a step into a more flexible zone like single family residential, it does allow certain flexibility. And as you mentioned already, if they come up with a good plan and we say, wow, that's a really good plan, we still have the option to either brand a variance for that or rezon the property or whatever we would need to do if, if they came up with a really great plan, as you said. We, we have the flexibility to do that in the future as a community. We don't have to fight in juvenile if we, if they had a really good plan for us. On the other hand, it gives us little leverage if we don't want a Kmart there and we zoned it as a single family residential and they say they want to build it. If we zone it so that they can put whatever they want, then we don't, then we lose all leverage in terms of being able to control what goes into that area. So I think that this is kind of like an in-between position where it gives an option, gives more development choices for somebody who could potentially buy it. We always have the capability to be more lenient in what it, the zone actually plans, but we can't be more restrictive down at the permits once we zone it certain way.
So, but then on that same argument, it can go the other way also. I mean, if it's, if it's left public, no matter what they want to do there, they've gotta come and request either some change or, and it leaves us that option to do whatever and we haven't labeled the property anything different than what it is actually used for, correct?
Currently.
If it was left public, we haven't labeled that property anything any different than what it's currently being used. And if they want to put residential there, if they want to use parcel, you know, part of the residential and some commercial, what if they wanted even some light industrial thing that's right there off the road?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we haven't, we haven't done anything at all by not changing it, just leaving it public, vice versa. If you make it residential, they can do the same thing because they're gonna come and wanna change it. I think we're having a discussion
But I mean, right, so this is just future land use, that's all of this proposal.
Well, and it's in our master plan, so, here's another thought about this. Existing land use had this public and institutional, including this part here that's on the west side of the creek. And if, as you're talking about, this eventually gets, could get developed as residential, this woods here, from about that ITC corridor over, there's a fence here that somebody, the school district put along this edge of it. This is all developed right up to the edge of that fence and to the edge of the, slightly this side of the edge of the ITC corridor. This more appropriately belongs in, in nature preserve. Because if you, and I think that if we're gonna change the zoning, we're gonna change the zoning for this to nature preserve to match this because if this becomes residential, then this, this pretty much pristine forest here along the creek could very well get chopped up into people's backyards.
But isn't that already zoning?
Already zoning that.
Zoned or future use is a different thing.
I don't know if zoned, but the future use is already showing that as you suggested.
According to your last zoning
Because that's school property, so it should be still in public.
It shouldn't be done in public, but for a functional
Maybe that's what they put the fence of as to the end of that's public and the rest of it when they purchased it.
It's what?
Expected to keep natural, maybe that is part of it.
Yes, and if we were to make that potential single family residential, I'm saying that that forest that is now undisturbed and undeveloped could very well become people's backyards and be developed as much as they want.
According to our zoning, it is natural preserve.
It, yeah.
According to the zoning, not according to the use, but according to the zoning.
So our current zoning already has
That portion.
That whole area as natural preserve.
Correct.
All right. So then this map that we're looking at, let's see if that
All righty.
Here we go. I just didn't want so pristine area to get
That was a good, good thought.
The zoning map as is, except for the change on Church Street, that needs
This is our current zoning map?
Yep.
Or is this?
Yep.
Is this our current zoning?
This is our current zoning
Yeah, that's the zoning.
Yeah, okay. So this is our current zoning map?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And this is rezoning that was done here was based on the last master plan's future owners, actually. So we actually did go back after the last one because we didn't have gateway as a zone before, I don't believe.
So truly, to, to either meet or not meet our current zoning, we just need to change on the map, the south Church Street strip, and that's it.
That's right.
Two layers.
And that little sliver, that
It's already
Like they pulled out, yeah.
It's already
As I said, it's that
They made a boo-boo.
They made a boo-boo.
Yeah, because they needed to do that.
I understand that.
Yeah, yeah.
Hence the error question.
Well, you're saying they made it
Yeah.
Who they?
McKenna.
McKenna, which is important because that probably
The question is whether that bit there of the park is part of the park or
It is.
It doesn't matter, it's zoned as nature preserve.
Zoned.
Owns it, doesn't matter.
We don't know who owns it, but it is zoned for
It's not a zone
Yeah, it's zoned, someone can't build a house on that right there.
Can't build anything.
They can't come, build, put anything.
But it's white because it's not part of our village park.
Yes. Because they don't know who owns it.
It's not our property.
Some, some guys will find out.
It's not public property.
Incorporated into the
It's not school property, which is the brownish color.
Okay.
It's not village property, which is the green color.
Are you satisfied with
Yes, yes.
Your part of this? Okay, so, of course, I'm looking at natural features and recreation and I'm
So I guess I'm not. So what are we gonna do with, with that number, this error, two corridor changes and
They were gonna call it?
And the, and the public and versus the residential? What are we doing, I guess?
No, those actually is, it's just for future land use, so we don't have to do anything with those. So the only thing that we need to correct is where it says error on the page.
Okay. So then, then the school knows that we have put their property for future land use as residential?
That I don't know.
They won't, they won't, let's go tell them that they don't get it. They're zoned as public.
So would you like that if somebody come and made your little hunk of property commercial
It's not, they're zoned as public.
Hey, my property became gateway.
They cannot do whatever they want because their zone didn't change.
Yeah, but isn't it up to us
But they could do it as future, I mean, just like that, we're saying
To every time
Future residential, we're gonna have some future industrial right over here, just future, without telling you.
And do you think you're gonna get away with that?
No.
No, do you think you're gonna get away with that?
No. But how do we have to read that and find out that we did it?
Isn't it incumbent on us if we're gonna make such a recommendation to discuss that with the school?
Did they not receive a copy for their sixty-three day review? Oh, the school district? Yeah. I believe they did.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure they did.
They had to.
Yeah.
And the point with all of this is, right now, if they're using it as a school, and it is a school, they don't care. Where they might care is, and, and even that shouldn't control it, but there, if, if you were a member of the school board, you would, and you, this is a potential property you're gonna sell, you'd want the chance to put it in whatever zoning would allow you to have the best return on the property. Now, that may not be consistent with what you want to do. Single family might be all right, multifamily might be much better for them because that would mean that they, they could get a higher dollar for it. Industrial might be fantastic for them because somebody would put a factory in. That doesn't mean that you want to do that. So again, that's why I'm saying stay as vague as you can with those things, let somebody propose and then you decide which one to do with it is. But if you ask the school district, I mean, it's their job to, to, to say to you, we want it to be the highest possible sale value we can get it. So what's that? My guess is it's, it's either gonna be industrial or something use like that because that's where the property is sold for the most.
So even, I mean, our, our future use of residential with our, at least our future thoughts is that it eliminates multiple low-income type housing.
No. This, this doesn't eliminate anything. This, what you're saying that you want for
Well, at least, it does say eliminate, I'm sorry, but, but we're, we're proposing that that's not what we want. We want single residential housing if we leave it like that, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
But for, before the school or anybody else, any other property owner would even have concern about that, it would have to be when we redo the zoning ordinances and then when we talk about rezoning anything like, we did do a rezoning after the last master plan update and if we did decide to do a rezoning after this master plan is approved and we wanted to rezone that property
Do we do that?
Then we would have to post it out and have, inform the public and get
But do we do that or does the council do that?
The zoning? Right, right now, that's why we're, I'm gonna hire the companies for the rezoning, but we, I believe
We do, it's the same as the master plan, we do the initial
Yes. I believe this group does that, correct?
So we gotta kind of, for two cents, is what?
Um, for the ZVA changes, they'll come to us, or, no, I'm sorry, whoever the company will, uh, they'll be when they're doing the zoning changes and updates, then it comes back to this commission, correct?
And then you make your recommendation to council.
And then that's when we can
Same process.
It's, it's similar process to the master plan.
Yeah.
We redo the zoning, we come up with a draft, they updated the zoning ordinances, when we have the draft prepared where we say, this looks good, we send it to the council, say, hey, we have updated the draft copy, we recommend approval, the council reviews it, they have their chance to go over, make any other changes or kick it back or whatever before they do their thing.
Yeah, hopefully, you're, you're gonna have Bill Denon and staff here
Yeah.
Work on things with the planner, whoever the planner is, bringing the, the zoning ordinance up to date with regard to state requirements, state rules and law, then you're gonna look at the zoning issues. You can, as part of that, suggest rezonings if you want to or, you know, those, those parts of it. But typically, the planning commission doesn't do the drafting, they will just review the draft.
Right, that that company is due.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the company basically puts it together, but they do collect input and they have meetings with planning commission for input and
And part of the way you got in the extra cost with McKenna, and I, I, I only know a little bit of that because I haven't seen all of this gone through it, but they're happy to come back as many times as you want them to to come and talk about it. But it's very clear in whatever document they're gonna give you is, here's what we charge for doing this. And it usually says, one meeting with the board. Next meeting is our full rate, whatever we charge. And the next one is the same thing and the same thing with changing it. You don't like, you told us that you wanted this whole area, this map to be all in green, now you want it in sixteen colors. Sure enough, we'll do that. And twelve hours later on, from our CAD guy, you'll get the bill.
Well, I do know when we did the master, I, I, I was on, on planning commission, last time we did the master plan on the zoning updates, I think we were two of them, right? And that's the process we did, we worked with planning together and upfront, they said, okay, in order to develop the master plan, we'll have so many meetings that we will have
They did that this time.
Planning commission, et cetera, et cetera, and then, and, and that's basically the same thing that they did this time around too. The same thing with the zoning, they say, then we'll have so many meetings with you to coordinate and stuff like that and that's all included in this price and then if it's extra meetings, then it's just as you said, if they, we want any extra meetings beyond what we have in the initial contract, then yeah, it's, it's, we'll charge our, our current rate. So we just have to make sure we're efficient and don't exceed those meetings.
I think we've already seen
Yeah.
It's been going on a long time.
Yeah. Yeah, I I'm I'm happy if we just make just that one little change that was recommended by.
All right, so Liz, are you cool with what?
Okay. Was there any other change that anybody else thought that the county recommended that we shouldn't work for yet?
Yeah, but we haven't moved on from that yet, so.
Yeah. All right.
I'm taking lead.
Get off in the map.
Yeah, I'm taking this lead.
What we're gonna move on. So you guys have something you wanna talk about?
Um, yeah, but you go ahead because I know the next one's na- um, the natural features. So you're probably gonna have everything that, yeah, but I was thinking.
Page six.
Yep.
And page eight.
Yeah, so I think you'll probably have the same change of thought.
So they went through and they found that they have recommendations here. For instance, the Michigan Natural Features Inventory data was updated for Oakland County in two thousand seventeen. And we have priority two and priority three lands within our village. And they're recommending that we add that information to the master plan because the information that's in there is from two thousand four when they first did this for Oakland County. So that I'm sure we can do that. And they also recommend some recreation opportunities. And talk about the fact that the draft master plan mobility section does not relate back to the natural features and recreation section.
Can you tell us where you're at?
Yeah, page six, three and one.
On the second paragraph.
Natural features and recreation.
Very bottom sentence and then the third.
Natural features and recreation, the third paragraph in there. On page six.
Okay.
Wait, yeah, the highlighted.
That's right.
Yep.
Um, and the updated.
Yes, they reference her at the end of the documents.
Yes, yes. But the grant, there's, we make more mention in the master plan of of the recommendations and agreements that are in the Brandon Ortonville Parks and Recreation Plan, which is just being updated now. As well as connect the mobility section in our master plan with natural features and recreation section, which has been kind of like decreased to the point of not mentioning much of anything about any kind of foot travel mobility except for sidewalks in the master plan. And on page eight is where the actual recommendations are for these things. Number five on page eight. He mentioned Michigan Natural Features Inventory information that was upgraded in two thousand seventeen. Is incorporated into our plan and the natural features map. And then there's one in the back of this section that's reviewed again. And then they highly recommend that we talk a great deal and make some plans for controlling invasive species in our master plan. That has been ignored pretty much.
What number is that?
That's number seven on page eight.
Seven?
That needs to be incorporated. Our, I don't know if you've been out in our village park, but it is. All the low areas are completely overrun with buckthorn and a lot of it with fragmities and those. Those have been there for a long time. What's new, and I've mentioned this before here, is, oh, you know, bittersweet vines are really taking a hold on the west side of the park. And so are black swallowwort. These are two really difficult invasive plants to get rid of. And if we allow them to get established any further than they are, we're gonna have a heck of a time getting rid of it. One of the worst things about those is unlike the shrubs, these vines make a tangle of vines right at ground level. So you're constantly tripping as you walk through woods if they're allowed to make large colonies. So it's an important thing. I'm glad they caught that and the fact that we don't even talk about it in here in our master plan. Okay, that's what I wanted to mention.
Those were the two big things with the M fifteen corridor heritage meetings that was recommended to include. Is if we don't include something for the invasives and then we go to get grants or anything like that, that that was going to be a concern. And then you said the FEMA map. That was the other thing that they said be sure that we include for any.
Floodplains.
The floodplains, yeah, for FEMA and to be sure to include that. And so those are, and then I have to find it. There's a specific phrase they said to use with that, with the FEMA maps for funding. And Dave Quappus and I kind of talked about it briefly, so I have to find it because it's not in this, but.
A key phrase.
There's a key phrase to utilize to receive the emergency funding based on the flooding with the maps and everything like that. That you just make sure the sentence is in there. So I think that's why the county consistently says that that's a big countywide thing, Genesee and Oakland County. When they redid their master plan, that was what they said to use at the meeting. And so those are the same two things you had on.
Yeah, the cooperative species man, cooperative invasive, there's things in here that where they leave words on, I notice. But cooperative invasive species management areas are called SIS, acronym SISMA. And that's number seven here on page eight. And so each of the counties around has their own SISMA, St. Clair County and Combe and Oakland.
And we're part of SISMA.
Yeah. So that information, we should really take advantage of that because it's a lot of help on invasive species that we aren't doing anything about now.
The only thing for us is the monies are very small because of the size of our community and what we contribute. Um, I believe it wasn't even gonna be seven hundred dollars for us when we do apply, which we're working on that, but versus other communities with greater needs. It's that's what it's based on. So we have been active with them, but it takes.
Is there any in our village, is there any working groups working on invasive plant species? That's a sort of volunteer group that we really need to develop. Before, it's too late.
Is it the consensus then to add five, six and seven to the master plan? Oh, is it five and seven?
We've got about five or seven so far.
But we also talked about FEMA maps.
Yes.
That's true, yes. I. What about the rest of it?
I think Golden's got a committee or a group working on it, invasive species.
If the FEMA maps were number five, according to the natural feature.
No, but I think FEMA maps are talking about it.
Detailed FEMA floodplain data included on number five, for number five. And number six.
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
So you're gonna add that for the master plan?
Well, it's some version of it. If it's not in there, it certainly needs to be part of our goals in planning. But then will we have to go back for reapprovals and everything since we're adding significant content changes to it?
To where?
For the master plan.
If we're incorporating new sections into the master plan, I mean, we have to have it reapproved by council and go through the.
Depends on at the end whether when whatever changes we get from these aren't considered minor changes or considered substantive changes.
And that's that's what I'm concerned about. If we start adding in things that aren't even currently in the plan.
It doesn't make it substantive. This would could be, these are just things that were left out. The thing you have to understand is everything doesn't have to be in this master plan. We're gonna do something about it in the future. So if unless these are things that are significant goals that we're gonna be looking toward and significant things that we want to adopt, I wouldn't bother to put them in.
My thinking is that we have, we are required by law to review it every five years. There's nothing that would prevent us from doing a review in a shorter timeframe than that. So I would, my recommendation would be make the one map change, which is which is very minor and should be correctable without any additional costs from McKenna if it was their mistake. And the rest of the stuff, I would say, let's keep this on file and next time we have an opportunity to update the master plan, we pull this out and make sure that those are incorporated. That would be my thought. So we have an inadequate master plan now on some of these subjects that are actually important subjects. And we're supposed to just go ahead with the kind of like master plan with chunks and important pieces. Any of the stuff that we add in other than the very minor map correction, I think, we'd still have to, all of it would still have to go back to the council. And I don't know what the council would do with some of these changes. So I mean, if that's an unknown and I don't want to start a ping pong back and forth again and delay the final adoption of the plan. What do you think?
Okay, because that's why at the very beginning of this meeting, I was having that discussion of should we change it now or will it cost more money? Or just let it go as it is and then do it down the line? That was at seven o'clock. And here we are again at the same topic. Um, so I guess then if we're not going to do any changes, then let's not waste our time in going through this.
But we're.
Or should we go through it and then decide if it's valuable enough to make the change?
And it appears to me that the planning division and the senior planner of Oakland County Planning Division found these things to be missing.
Correct, these are recommendations, yep.
Actually missing in our.
And like Dale said, you don't have to put everything in there. The recommendations, so what is really, really important to you?
You have to put it in there. But.
I know what's important to me and what's important about, what would you guys like out of these recommendations to see going?
So the question I have.
We recognize that what you say here and how you say it here is gonna go back to the council.
Correct, yes, that's proper.
So you you should be able to say that with whatever you have here, you've reviewed it and you recommend these changes or not.
Right.
The more that you recommend, the more that council is very likely to go into it even deeper.
Mm-hmm.
If that's what you want, that's fine. But with with a lot of these things, as I've said, most of the time, this guy must have a lot of free time because normally you don't get anything from the county. I mean, when independents is on their their plans, the couple of times they did it when I was there, we give them one page. It's good to us.
Because this was the staff.
Not not interested, you know, because unless it affects the county as a whole or it affects some joining community directly, like if we were gonna change all of of our site of M fifteen to factories, you'd expect to hear something from Global because that's would be a big change in their immediate area. But otherwise, it's your property. We don't care what you do with it. So you don't normally hear a lot from them. This this surprises me this much detail.
I appreciate this much detail.
I like this.
It's a lot of things that people that know vastly more than this planning commission and this village council about these subjects are giving us.
That's how the sixty-three D is supposed to work.
And, yeah, and that's what we, that's why, see, we asked for input from and review from other entities, including the county. And they, the county at least, gave us, the county planning office gave us good detailed information that they think should be incorporated in our master plan. And for us to just say, oh, okay, it'll cost us if we put any of this in here, so let's not do it. To me, that's not, not doing your job personally.
Devil's advocate, does it have to be in the master plan to pursue it? No.
What are we talking about?
Specifically, right now, two or three items. You've said two or three items and these are very important. Does it have to be in there to pursue the invasives? Does it have to be in there to pursue updating that data? Can we do that on our own? I'm just being the advocate. Does it have to be in there for us to consider this an important project for us to start?
It doesn't, but those those remarks to that would help you in grants and stuff.
Yes.
If if your master plan says invasives are a big issue for us and you want to solve it, that would help you in a grant application.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir.
Uh, if I might also, if I might suggest is, are these things, I know that we have talked about if that it would be a good idea for our community to have a forestry management plan for our park property. And I think that are these elements that would be good in a forest management plan? Because that could be another way that we could cover them and cover the grant opportunities by having some kind of a plan in place, but it doesn't necessarily have to be in the master plan. We could do that as a separate more forestry management plan targeted specifically for our natural preserve areas.
I thought that was by the council.
That was a really, that's a really good suggestion.
In fact, yeah.
That was mixed by the council. So forestry management isn't happening? So if it's not gonna happen, this might be where what is happening? So I'm gonna go back to the what's really important.
I think it just would be a matter of.
What is important to each of us?
We want to see these things somehow that we can utilize it for grant money and stuff. Maybe that would be something that would, you know, revisiting that topic with the council. Just about how you saw it, I think.
I thought it was so great the first time, so I don't think anything at this point would change their mind.
But it will open it in a bell.
I I think maybe November's when you reapproach with forestry management.
Well, I mean, when we're talking specifically about the invasive species control, that does seem to be a topic that several people on council are on board with, with the invasive species control, particularly fragmities. So that could be an opportunity to find a way to try to. I think we need some kind of a better plan for how we're going to manage our natural areas. There is no plan in here.
We do.
And now that the now that the council has the ordinance that prohibits a lot of things in the one specific part of property, they may be more willing to allow looking at a more general forestry management plan that targets more specifically how do we maintain the natural features within these areas such as fighting invasive species and stuff, which. As long as there's no mention of trails, maybe it's something that they would be wanting to reconsider. Just my thought. Well, so the question is, can some of these be included as appendices in the master plan? Can we put appendices?
Via appendices?
No, because at least the information would be in there. Almost all these large plants have have appendices. Are we allowed to do that? Could we just add this entire document as a, can we just add this entire document as a reference document of the appendices?
No, I wouldn't do that. This is all the recommendations from the county for what you do with your plan.
Right.
Your what you do with your plan could be what portion of the dish you want to do, but to add their criticism of your whole plan.
All right, okay.
That's not a good idea.
Well, if we were to do what we wanted to do, we would think of this.
Well, that's fine if you included pieces of it, but he was suggesting we take this old document to put in.
I know, that was just an easy way to keep it, keep these these suggestions. Here, you're up.
No, but don't forget your train of thought because.
Please, please, please. Come on.
Oh, okay, you're gonna forget what you were saying. All right, I I just wanted to go through real quick and then you guys tell us, Dale, we're looking kind at you, if it does not work doing and spending the money, because that was my concern from the get-go. All right, one of the first things they say is our, oh, sorry, page six, the very top. We should be using current MNFI data. We're using two thousand and four. They say at least use the two thousand and seventeen.
Right.
Now, is that something that we should incorporate or not as far as monies?
Well, it's gonna take a major redoing.
Okay, so that's I'm I'm asking your your.
As long as as your maps and everything know
Okay.
that it is that another date, they know there's another newer map they could go to.
Okay, all right, all right, the next thing.
You could make that change, but I'm that's, that would take a review that that I'm I'm not willing to try to undertake. I'm gonna have to go back and.
And and that's why I'm asking, that's why I'm asking.
It's not just a map. It's all the information that they've gathered on these vegetative communities. Well, this is what they're talking about.
Yeah.
No, that's the map of what they're talking about. That's not the data they're talking about. The data goes along with the map. The map just shows you where they're talking about.
Yeah.
So I think the only thing that we mentioned in our master plan is that there are some property two wetlands in the park area. There are called.
All right, can I finish my list? I'm gonna finish my list. All right, here we go. The next paragraph. Uh, we're not, yeah, never mind. I'll just leave. Anyways, it did, if you guys read it about the plan and being cohesive with the township plan and us, but I know that we can't do anything with that because of what just happened. Okay, so but that was one of my highlighted things about, because we refer to the township parks and rec only once. And then we make other references and ours is not ever referring back to it. And I just wanted to point that out so you guys knew that, but I know that can't change because that was crazy getting it through to begin with.
Page here you are?
Um, at the top of six.
Top of six.
Okay, all right, then on page eight. Number four, again. Number four, again, and it's probably too much money, but, um, our census information, they're saying update it, ours is really outdated, and we should at least be using the two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen. So, is that a big change, Dale, or did we leave it at that point?
Well, I would personally go back to the county and say, you know, we've been notified there's much more recent information out there.
That's on both those things.
And that was provided.
Yeah, I mean, even this one is two thousand and four.
Yeah.
So I don't know if, I mean, they didn't update it.
Well, the thing, I, I'm not sure where the references are in the plan.
Okay.
But the census is two thousand and ten.
Okay.
They're referring to is not the, the US Census, they're referring to American Community Survey.
What's it, okay.
Whatever that is.
Yeah, what is that then?
I'm not sure what it is.
All right.
And then there's also the populant estim, population estimates program.
Right, the pop.
SEMCOG has, has its own set of plan of projections of, of, um, how many people live every place and what they're doing, and they will publish that. I mean, we could have a publication of what SEMCOG says our population is today. But for the most part, most communities are better off sticking with what's the official census data.
Okay.
And going from there. Now, there are other suggestions, but those aren't official
Okay.
to, as far as census figures are concerned.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not saying in that, that you couldn't do that or you shouldn't do that. I'm saying I don't think it's necessary to do it as long as you're referring to an existing census.
Okay, and that's fine then, because I'd rather not waste money.
I mean, this, this, well, I don't know that I would call it a waste of money, but, but it is.
I just wanted to point it out.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not something that whoever would, as they were drafting through this, felt that it was necessary to include the other influences to say what they think we are. Now, with, with, with Ortonville, the chances of any, any one of these being starkly different than the other
Yeah.
is very slim, because you don't have that much population, you don't have that much opportunity for population, and an estimate of five people or ten people or fifteen people is like what we're probably looking at in differences, which doesn't mean anything.
Mm-hmm, but eventually, one day, we will have, yeah, we will have to update that, so that could be, that's what I'm thinking.
Three thousand dollars per person.
Yeah, but, okay, but right now, we don't need to do it, so let's, let's move on.
Well, before you move on from that.
Oh, boy.
Look at page, in the master plan, current version of it, page thirty-one, which is what this refers to. It says, um, it recommends this census. And on page eight there, which you were talking about.
Yeah, number four, yep.
Recommend that census information in two thousand and seventeen. Well, that's, that ASC and P E P be used, but it also says, um, that there's no reference to which SEMCOG data was used. Well, right there underneath these things, it says source, US Census Bureau, and then SEMCOG, two thousand and seventeen. So that critique doesn't seem to be correct.
No, it doesn't tell only what in SEMCOG, it, it's correct.
It says SEMCOG, two thousand and seventeen.
The date that SEMCOG used it, but not the reference of where it came from.
But SEMCOG is a place, not a.
But we don't know in this one. SEMCOG is an entity.
A published, published, I don't know.
SEMCOG.
That's who it is and the date, not where it came from, that's who it came from. So it's, the reference is not there.
So we would have to ask SEMCOG what this is.
No, we would have to ask McKenna if we put it in.
Right, and that's my point. McKenna should be bringing that, she should have brought that to our attention.
To cite the resource in which they used.
So if Gordon Scott here, they didn't use the most updated resources for these two graphs.
Correct. Correct, and, but if it's gonna be expensive.
According to him, they did not cite the SEMCOG reference.
So we don't know if it's.
Which is correct, they did not do that.
Updated, we just don't know if it's the most updated.
I don't know. When it says SEMCOG, two thousand and seventeen, I think it seems like an indication of two thousand and seventeen information.
So number five then is the MNFI then?
Missing, there are the features inventory.
Okay, and that, I highlighted that that was part of what you brought up, recommending incorporating updated information, but at this point.
Okay, we moved on to number five, but on the bottom of number four, as Rick was talking about, there appears to be an error on the graph.
Yeah, there was that.
Are we going to?
Showing changes in populations.
Check with McKenna on fixing that if that is true, or is it wrong?
Three, three.
Well, I don't know that we can tell without knowing, having the original ones to look at. So, but Scott there says that there's an error in there, so.
Change in, changes in populations for undefined communities.
Liz, do you know where we're heading?
Yeah, but I'm, yeah, I'm there, but I'm trying to find the error that they're talking about.
It's on page eight, yep, number four.
And are we able to find the error without knowing what it is?
Where is the figure three, page thirty-one?
So when a bumblebee was talking about.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Yeah, pick out the error.
So anyways, is there a boo-boo in this list?
Have McKenna check the.
But McKenna needs, yeah, to look at that.
If it's an error, they need to fix that.
Well, undefined communities, is that southeast, where it says southeast at the very bottom?
Southeast.
Where?
What are you saying?
And we've also got a blue village of nothing.
Well, that's true, that might be.
That's our undefined, village of nothing.
That might be the error that he's talking about.
Could we?
Oakland County, then Village of Holly, then Village of Oxford, then Ortonville Village.
It said undefined communities.
And then of Oxford? And then of Oxford?
And then southeast in general. So I think they probably asked.
Can they just review that graph? Okay, cool.
Yeah. What are they talking about? Is the error something? Would you hear?
This got some.
It apparently says village of, and then doesn't say what that line.
The labels are.
But yours says, mine says.
Mine says, um, the progress sixty-three day.
You gotta. I have an earlier draft of it that's.
Village of Holly.
Okay, well, they changed.
Oakland County, Village of Holly.
The label is from Kaden in the.
They need to fix it. Okay, so, it could have.
It's supposed to be say Village of Orton though.
So the text is too vague and it didn't return.
And this is supposed to be Village of.
So it needs to be fixed, doesn't matter what it shows, but it needs to be fixed.
There still just needs to be looked at.
One extra line, what's the green line on your graph?
Village of Oxford.
Green line is Village of Oxford?
Purple diamond line is southeast Michigan, and the golden triangle line is city of Clarkston.
Oh, that's what's missing, is the city of Clarkston. Okay, yeah, they need to fix that.
This is in the February draft.
Oh, my goodness.
I mean, he's got the right one, we got the wrong one.
Yeah, so we just, yeah, we, we just gotta make sure that it's right.
Yeah, so the February draft, it's correct, good job. Most recent draft, it is not.
Right, okay, good.
I think that's what Scott said.
I'm trying, I'm, I'm thinking that was the point, that where I started on number five. This is.
Very good.
I just didn't wanna forget to go back.
And I already have later, we finally got something.
Yeah, okay. You know, for a person with ADHD, this is so hard for me. I'm telling you, it's hard.
Keep going.
All right, here we go. All right, so we got through that, so they're gonna check that. Okay, then go down to the number seven, the fragment, the fragment is exactly what you were talking about. I thought maybe something should be in, but it's gonna be, um, too expensive to put something in, we could do it another way.
I think it's, you know, in a natural.
And, and I, I begin to believe, I had a rec feel same as rec, if this grant's gonna be available, I mean, that could be contingent on, on a grant of having something in there.
Having a venture, have a goal.
That's where I'm, I'm with you guys on that, but I.
So where's it gonna go?
I'm looking.
Add your features.
Where are you gonna put it?
What do you mean?
We have an area.
They recommend having it, but where?
Are we gonna tell, we should be telling McKenna, we want this added here.
Okay. To the natural, or sorry, natural, where's our parks and rec?
Underneath, natural, natural features.
Exacts, next, this can land you.
Right, well, it talks about individual.
It's page forty-seven.
Forty-seven?
Page forty-seven.
Oh, hold on.
Can I just simply say, we have like two or three paragraphs on the natural land view.
Here we are, yeah, natural features.
Natural features.
Two steps.
Yeah.
So, that would then incorporate your Parks and Rec plan. Let's develop it in our Parks and Rec plan and put it all in there as to how to maintain invasives. What it says in here is by priority of one, two, and three, that park is a priority two, correct?
Correct.
That space.
What are you saying exactly?
The Ortonville Village Park, is that a priority two?
Two and.
Priority two, natural area.
Right, okay, so, in there, it says we will maintain them and prioritize by one, two, and three. We already have it as a priority, we already need to maintain it and take care of it, that's what it says in there.
Okay.
That's what our goal is, not detailed how we'll take care of it, but that we need to take care of it, maintain it.
Okay.
So, we would then possibly, page forty-seven.
In your, here.
I think.
Right, forty-three.
Forty-three.
Here, here.
So then you would take that in detail, that in your Parks and Rec master plan, as to how you would maintain that properly, possibly.
Parks and Rec master plan.
It's by what?
Okay, so my.
That's fine, you can edit that and change that at any point for future grants.
Okay, my question, I wanna finish my question.
We could now, if we made do this, it's the same thing.
I wanna finish my question.
Anyway, so that was my thought.
So, my question is, by not putting it in there, will we not have available opportunities for grants? By not specifically calling it out? Is this vagueness okay to apply for grants, grant money?
Well, the vagueness that's there is not in our plan.
Correct, so we are expected to have it in there?
So then it's not, well, you.
Wait a minute, what, what?
You're looking at the existing plan.
I'm asking a question, I'm asking a question. All right, go ahead, I'm sorry.
If any, if you have specific things that you want to do or that you were trying to do, and you cite them in your master plan, or Parks and Rec or for the master plan, you can point to that if you're applying for a grant and say, here's evidence of the desire of the community and our attempts to do it, except for funding, we would be doing this. So it helps. The fact that it, whether it's there or not there, doesn't mean you can't apply for it. It just means you get more points, because someone doing a grant with, if, if other communities that have a whole section dealing with invasives and what a horrible problem it is, how dangerous it is and all that, and so, if those people really are taking it serious, you don't even have a mention.
Right, because we're so vague. So my question again, and I'm not asking this right, obviously, is it important to have a mention of it in there in order to have opportunities to be considered for grants? Or if we leave it like this, it's, it's fine, and I know we can still apply, but would it be better to have anything in there?
I think it would be better if there was a mention of those items in, in some way like this, that is like a high version view of it, of, of what you're trying to accomplish. I mean, right now, we, I would be hard pressed to know where I would go look for any of this.
Okay, right, okay.
Based on this conversation, because it's going so many different directions. So if, if this is something that is generalized, at least it gives us something that we can point to. If it's not mentioned at all.
Then it's not, not the problem, not the issue, yeah. I still haven't gotten through my list, you know.
Can we simply, in the first paragraph where it says existence of rare species, can we make it rare and invasive? And you're done, because your Parks and Rec plan is what addresses your parks and recs needs in the way of the grants and things. There's nothing in here on developing any parks or anything for that specific reason. Can we simply add two words?
The Parks and Rec is the only thing we need to use?
No, no, that was just a question, I mean, I don't know.
Oh, because if it is.
Because we have existence of rare species, existence of rare and invasive species, right there. We are acknowledging them, they've been rated, they've been already evaluated, now we need to address that in our parks plan, correct? The very first paragraph, second to the last sentence.
You're looking at the existing plan, not the new.
Well, the master plan and, and, and the recreation master plan may have some overlap to them. But with regard to invasive species out in, in the general public, that's more the master plan than is.
They're talking about on this park property, that's what this one addresses, it's just park property.
Can I ask a question? I seem to recall that we were looking at the very recent council meeting about whether or not we should make a change to the current Parks and Recs plan related to potential grant funding. Where is the current grant cycle in terms of grant funding applications for this year, and when's the next cycle start?
We have, for this calendar year, have to have applications in by April first.
Okay, so anything that we do here today is not going to be in place before that time. Uh, if we incorporate these things into the joint Parks and Recs plan and ask along with the township, because they also have issues with invasive species too, that could be potentially a way to cover the grant application aspects of showing that we have a plan in place. Uh, and then also, it would also be good for the township too, if they include it, if it's not in their plan already.
The master plan for planning of the use of property all through the community, and the recreation plan, two very distinct documents. Recreation plan deals with recreation period.
Parks.
Yeah, and, and so the invasive thing has some, some influence in there. But it, 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 having it placed there only doesn't support your master plan. That's why I think what you were suggesting is some reference in there, and I think that's a good idea to make the reference. I, what I'm saying is, with either of these, I don't see you need to do big amendments or big changes to make that. You just need to have some, some reference to it, so if, if you don't give the criticism.
So maybe a minor change like Melody suggesting, would Mary, Mary?
I'm, I'm pretty much done, I mean, I'm just, I'm just trying to say that, that you, you need to recognize the two distinct documents that you're dealing with, but, um, you can't, you can't just decide, well, we'll just refer them to the master plan for, for the Parks and Rec, because it's like, well, you're applying for, what's that got to do with them? What, what recreational thing are you gonna be doing with this? Getting rid of thermiteys along a creek or, or something, or like one person said that they were.
In the ballroom.
Yeah.
Well, keep in mind, our invasives, invasives are not just in our parks.
Right.
It's all over, that's the nature of invasions.
I'm just looking at, what the suggestion was, was the parks and the natural features area. That's where the suggestion was, that's all I was just saying.
So that, is that too simple of what time you said of just adding the error and?
Yes.
I'm gonna refer to Dale again. Can we just add one sentence? Is that enough, or would that not cut it?
No, I, I don't think that, that they're gonna weigh the number of words that you've used
Okay.
to explain it. If you, if you recite it, cite it as a goal and, and it is a problem, you know, I think you, you've said enough so that, that if I'm writing a document, I can say, and this is what the, what the village has been trying to do, reference, look at, look at this, this plan, this paragraph, these sentences.
So, before you move on, I don't know that you folks really know what the priority natural areas are. They go to evaluate all the areas in, well, each county and state, or most of them, and looking for areas that are the, the most pristine, and then the next most pristine, and so on. That's how they decide on whether to call either priority one area, which they wanna focus on most, and, or priority two, to say focus on some if you have some, and priority three is kinda like, well, you don't have to do much with those. But anyway, who does that? Well, Michigan Natural Features Inventory, which is part of the DNR, used to be part of, first it was the nature conservancy, and then it got attached to Michigan Nat, Michigan State Universal Extension, and now it's part of the DNR. Well, anyway, same bunch of botanists and zoologists. So, the thing is, they designate these areas for us to take note of in our planning. And they don't just say, okay, this is a priority two in our case, natural area. They also have a bunch of recommendations in there of how to manage this, best management practices for us. This has nothing whatsoever
Correct.
in it, in this master plan, it just says, we have a, it says, it's priority one areas are most urgent areas, we need a protection of all priority three areas are least urgent, it's like, no information. And, and the village has our main park and some of the lands around it are priority two. And then on the west side of M-15, there's a large area that includes Paris Gordonwood Camp, is priority three. So, this then contains nothing whatsoever as any kind of goal. All it says is, we have this here, that's all it says, that's nothing, and it's useless, the way it is. The least we could do is take the priority, the two thousand and seventeen. the 2017 updated information on this and incorporate the recommendation, or at least some of the recommendations, to apply so that we, we have a, at least a rough roadmap to follow in managing those natural areas. If we don't, then we're just wasting paper. It, it doesn't do anything. Clear?
Okay. So, back to that. So that's when I asked, should we incorporate the MNFI data? And then also they had their little, this thing. They suggested we put that in and then update the, the data that they have in 2017. So, and then this thing is already pre-written someplace on how to take care of or deal with.
General guidelines and how to.
General guidelines. So.
Care for priority natural.
If we took a snippet of the general guidelines and, I don't know if we want to add the map or update the data. I don't know what is more appropriate. Pardon me?
The maps are. The maps are.
Um, they just said to, no, they.
Land use map. Take a look at that.
Actually, they said an updated MNFI map has been included and updated.
They have that right here.
Yeah, we have, we don't.
In the back of this little package.
Right, but we don't have it in, in it, in ours.
But look at our land, our current land use.
Is it that updated map?
Well, if it isn't, it should be.
Well, that's what I'm saying, Rick.
Well, I'm saying.
No, because this was one in 2020 and it can't be that date. This is outdated.
Okay, right. Okay, so this is our most correct, beautiful. So that's the baby we should be going off of.
Oh, it says 2017. I lied. 2017 at the top, printed on 2020.
Okay.
And what I'm, what I'm.
So we should have the most updated one.
Yeah, why I'm saying that is, if you look at the map, we've got land uses in here. McKenna has that priority two natural area. It's overlaid on this natural feature map, not the land use map. A natural features map, it's already there. Priority two natural areas is hashed there. So we don't need to add this separate map.
Okay.
Because it's already.
Perfect, because I'm just looking for an answer. Okay.
That's why I'm trying to answer it.
Perfect. All right, we're good with that.
Next, what's next?
So then should we take a snippet or see what they say wherever, where do you find that information of the best practices for controlling it? But where do you find that information?
In the Michigan Natural Features Inventory or in the report that they have for open comment.
So is that something?
But why does that need to be in our plan?
Could you just take a, like, make a couple sentences and put it in here? Like, we don't need pages. We just need.
You can say, you can say this to refer to.
Yeah, or just, yeah, we could do that.
You could put the information in the appendix and say, refer to it in the appendix.
How do you guys want to do it?
If you don't want it in the body of the plan.
How big of a document is that?
Yeah, is it like a, one page or?
How big of a document are you talking about?
I'm not talking about the whole document. I'm talking about just the parts that slide to priority two natural areas, which is what we have here. But we also have priority two. And I don't know the.
How big is that?
Well, it's probably several pages.
Are you, there you go.
You know, if you put the information in the appendix, you can just say, refer to the appendix in the back of the plan. And then people that want to know about it.
But you're adding all of that as part of the plan.
Not the whole appendix.
Whatever, the three or four pages, when you're referring to, they already have something laid out and something finished. This is going to be in addition to that. We're going to have to figure out some way to put it in so that it makes sense that it's in and you can identify it from the rest of the document. And I'm not sure what all that would take.
Okay.
But it's, it's, anything you add to this, anything that you add to this like that is definitely going to cost us.
Right.
Now, I'm not saying, saying that to you to say you shouldn't do it because as long as it's taken to get this done, we ought to get it done right.
Correct.
We ought to get all the things in there that we ought to get done. So if we, if you all need it, you gotta, you're going to have to be ready to come to council.
Yeah.
To have this same discussion because it's going to be another two hours.
But you're saying that if we put it in, then we'll have opportunities for grants. If we leave it out, we really don't have opportunities. It's another five years till we do this again.
With, with, as long as you're referencing the, the area of something that you're interested in working on, as far as I'm concerned, that's enough.
Okay.
You don't have to have a lot of.
You don't have to put the, okay.
If, if you make no mention of it, like, like when people were talking about the preservation part, and, and there's really nothing in our ordinance that talks about changes or improvements to make in that part. If I make it, get an application or getting, see a grant that gives me an opportunity for doing something, if I refer back to what documentation we have right now, the ordinance we adopted said we're, we're not going to do anything with it. And I, I can't change that in, 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 in dealing with it. Our plan is to leave it blank, empty. So I can see somebody with a grant that we're going to for signings or for entrances or for whatever else saying, you don't want to do it. Why are you asking me for money to do that? You've already made a position not to do anything else.
Well, it already says right there, we're going to address these items in here.
We're going to address the items.
We will address them in the order priorities one, two, and three. We don't have a priority one, priority two is our highest priority and it says we will address those.
Okay.
We've already addressed it. Specifically how, we didn't say it, but we said, sending two or three. So what if we said, the problem of invasive species remains a countywide issue as they have been known to clog drains, destroy roadways, blah, blah, blah. In an effort to continue our natural preservation, we are invasive species and what's the other one?
Termites.
No, no. Yeah, rare invasive species. Done.
It's not done in any way.
But, but we just need to reference it.
If we took historical and we took natural, we took biking, we took every single part, this would be a five million page document.
Yeah.
All we do is address one page per item and we, we envelope what we would like to do, not how you're going to do it.
Right.
What you want to do, not how goes in this part.
There's no mention whatsoever of what we're going to do for our natural.
In that one sentence there was.
No, there is, no, there isn't. Mr. Chairman, do you want to have a floorcase on that? Okay, number two. First of all, it sounds like this is something that should go into plan, but it also sounds to me that this is something that we'll need to put some thought in to draft the language before we can make a decision. I don't think that we have time to complete that process tonight.
No.
Melanie, do you have more suggestions or changes beyond that?
Oh, just one more.
Okay, because I, I would propose that perhaps what we should do is consider postponing the final changes and stuff until our next meeting so we can continue on with the rest of the business that we should conduct next because I think we have some other business that is important. Did you want to, I, I would like to hear what is your.
No, it's just what, something they recommended as far as the rehabilitation. All they were saying is if the mobility section of, of the document could be moved to be for goals and objectives because it references mobility, it would make it easier to use and read.
And they also had something about removing duplication that I think also was a good suggestion.
Yeah, so that was the only other thing I had.
So then I make a motion to postpone this item until the next, next meeting so we can collect and draft some language related to the frag and live use and also bring our additional topics for other changes that they recommended and cover those at the next meeting.
Same.
So who's in the draft? Aren't you're in discussion now, is there, who's in the draft? The, it sounds like the only thing that's of time-consuming and taking up is the, the invasive species portion of that. So who's going to?
Well, I'll get whatever information I can about the Michigan Natural Features Inventory, priority two recommendations. And then whatever, I don't know how we're going to incorporate invasive species in this master plan.
Kind of like.
I think the easiest thing would be maybe to add one more section covering invasive species in this, right here on page forty-three. Just add a section right.
Yep, little paragraph.
Can you put it down to a paragraph?
We've just got to acknowledge it.
Well, for instance, it's, it's, it's recommended here and it's pretty good. It's just a single paragraph. Recommendation, recommendation, chapter, page eight of our critique here. Recommendation to include best practices from open comment about the species management area, that's CISM. CISM. And the North Open Headwaters.
Number seven.
And we see they left out the word land. It should be considered. Those are the groups that are focusing the most on invasive species. And. Anyway, so we can just put in that kind of wording.
Correct.
To talk about invasive species. And those are the sources of information and they're, they're also sources of assistance, volunteer assistance.
So you'll be able to just shoot us through, let's just sort of, so we get it ahead of time and build.
I don't think we should wait till next month for just a.
And that specifically says to coordinate and support with the parks and rec plan.
Yep.
So is it going to go in one, the other, both? It's, I mean, they've said that three different times to make sure it's in the parks and rec.
Well, I, I just am suggesting we postpone till next meeting for now. So I don't want to start.
I just wanted to make sure that somebody was going to put together whatever we wanted postpone it for. It's all my own question. But I'm happy with that.
This is a home issue.
Oh, oh, no, there's, I was voting, yeah.
Are we voting?
No, I told.
I'm favor.
I think so, we're on.
Aye, aye, aye.
All right. Oh, we're postponing till April?
We're postponing till April.
Does that make a difference with the sixty-three days and the, the timing or anything?
Okay, six, sixty-three days are already up.
Okay.
However.
Yeah, no, I'm good, I'm good.
It does make a difference on when we schedule our public hearing.
Okay.
Do they know we're ready to do a public hearing?
Correct.
That's right.
So we may want to strike that on the agenda.
So.
Well, A is postpone, which means.
To what?
And setting the public.
No.
The comments, the comments that we had from.
We covered everything I had in my app.
Yeah, I think we're fine.
I would suggest if there are any further files.
Are we going to address the road commission map?
Get them onto Rick prior to the April meeting.
Sure. Well, I guess at the next time we meet.
It's the next one, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm going to write it.
Yeah. It's two seconds to make agree or not.
Our road commission comments.
Where it gets up to you there.
On master plan. I think we just send any more additional plots that we want to do to Rick and then he can distribute all that out in advance. We have all the plots and we can discuss.
You should wait on all of that.
Yeah, we are.
So that one's postponed.
We have to move past the master plan now that we have to wait till, till next month.
In the meantime, I can contact McKenna on those things.
Thank you.
Okay.
I think you should wait.
You think I should wait?
Until we have all of what we're going to have to do and then we can approach and say, here's the list of stuff. We'll pay you to do those, we won't pay you to do these. And I can.
Like I did last time with the grant and.
Yeah, so we're, we're clearly.
This one list does better.
Do you need an agenda?
I'm thinking, I'm thinking.
All right, so we're here at this, you can use mine. Here, let's go to schedule a public hearing and.
No, we're postponing.
I know, but we got to.
Unfinished business, A, zoning work.
All right, did we all agree on postponing that then?
Okay, yeah.
Is there a vote?
All right.
Salomon, is there a vote?
There was a vote.
Yeah.
Not on the public hearing.
There was not.
Not on a postponement.
We postponed master plan, which, schedule public hearing was a sub item under the master plan. So I'm assuming we postponed. We considered most of the comments we received. We're not going to schedule a public hearing now. So unfinished business, zoning ordinance, A. Would you recommend that we, we talked about this last month and I was a slacker who hadn't written.
Yes, you were.
Held it up.
Well, I can just give you a really quick update because I think we were, I think the manager suggested that you postpone a recommendation until you gave the third party a chance to reach out to us, which they never did.
Okay.
Third party Beckett and Rayner?
That is correct.
Yeah.
So did you hear anything further from them? Did we contact them or just wait to hear if they had any more?
It really makes it kind of cut and dry of making your choice of one of the two.
Right.
And I think the.
I'm with Bob on that.
The, the building official gave you his recommendation last month.
So Rick, we're waiting for you because we all know who we want it.
Read the minutes.
Yeah, exactly.
Do you need a motion or?
Yeah.
No, killing me, Rick, you really are. Make your motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we go with, was it Carsley?
Yeah, Carlisle.
Carlisle and Wortman.
Support.
And it's recommended from the village manager and the building official. And they were, oh, they were.
They were.
Were they the lost us? And they were the lost, that's my full motion.
Do we need to put the fourteen-nine in there or no? Okay.
Well, all you're doing is recommending to village council.
Beautiful. Support, support. All right, time is supported.
Any, any discussion?
We're good. We were just waiting for you to.
I, I was happy with what they had to offer. I'm happy with local other counties that utilize them, had a chance to reach out to parks and, and ran township and.
Yep. All right, so you need to take a.
And they also did the recent joint recreation plan too, if I recall. And I think that looked pretty good, the formatting and everything in there. And then changes that were requested, they came back in a very timely manner and they're clear.
Yeah, I like their building too.
And I will say that one thing I liked about Roe's proposal is that they, they were going to do a a technical analysis after meeting with, with the fire information village council and the staff.
Roe?
Roe. They're, they were going to pair a technical analysis to identify issues. And then only depending on what the technical analysis showed, were they going to offer limited zoning ordinance updates? So in other words, they were going to actually evaluate what we have so far, see if there's areas that were lacking or missing, and then only work on those areas that were identified. That, to me, is the way I would, would plan those in.
Roe, Roe is not known as a planning firm, planning and zoning firm, where Carlisle Wortman is.
Right.
I, I don't know what they have on staff are doing, but I'm telling you, from, from the, from the staff's standpoint, we're not looking to use Roe for much of anything. They were our chief engineers here and I, in the next meeting, I have had prepared a couple of recommendations to have them do something more for us, but I'm going to go back to Keith again and have them take a look at it because we've had so many times that we weren't happy with things that they have done recently. We don't want to take the chances. Now, we may do it on one item because we've already hired them to do a lot of the initial work. And that's for the sidewalks on two or three streets. To get a new firm to do that, they're going to go out and want to do all new shots and all new stuff. So it's going to cost us a lot more to do it. So that may be the one that stays there, but I'm just saying to you, I would, I will argue against using Roe for anything because of the experience that, that you had recently with him on stuff and that I've had before you asked.
Do you want to take a roll call and see who's before Carlisle?
Yeah, I, I like Carlisle too. I just like the approach that Roe had. So if you all are in favor of Carlisle, what is it?
I don't think so.
I'll, I'll certainly agree with that. And I like their proposal as well. So are we doing a roll call for you? Did you want a roll call?
No.
Yeah, you're going to have to do, are we all in favor?
Or you want to do a voice call? You're the chairman, it's up to you.
No.
You got to be quiet for one moment. Anyway, I don't, I, I appreciate it. So, do we have any motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, made a motion to you.
And it was supported.
Carlisle Wortman.
So, I'm in favor?
Aye.
Okay, forward. Nobody. Took care of that. That's right. All right. So then we go to wait on the committee. Update.
There is no update.
All right.
I don't know what's happening within. So until I hear from council member Robinson, I don't know what to say.
Alright.
That's it.
Either you've come to numbers, I didn't even get it, yeah?
No, that's not our, we're not on wait finding. I, I was speaking to myself, I'm not on wait finding.
Right, has there been any more, so given that DDA maybe?
No, they're not, that's, they're not waiting on that.
Alright, so we, any updates on our CIP?
Do we?
On what?
CIP, what?
Is this changed from last?
It has not changed, so I know we need to add like a zero turn on there, we need to add a couple of things that have already been purchased.
Need a lot more?
Yeah.
Alright, so if there's nothing new on it.
Yeah, well, I would like to see added as well is the Oakwood sidewalk grant as a placeholder, we do have Oakwood sidewalks on there. Um, but we don't have, I mean, we don't know a total anticipated cost, but I would like to see the grant in our matching, so we have that as a placeholder money wise.
What's it?
In the year.
Yep, the Oakwood sidewalk grant, the urban.
Right, where it says Oakwood sidewalks, it would just be nice to know what our expected matching is and what we're receiving and then, um, we hear the grant.
So what is the grant, we, how are you, where's the side book?
Bonnie, Bonnie.
We don't have that information, just we know what we're receiving and what our match is. If we will get a sidewalk out of it.
You're talking about adding an estimate, a cost estimate in the year?
The year will be twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-three, and it's two eighty-five, I believe, don't write it down. I don't, I think it's two eighty-five and then our match.
Is that part of the CIP?
She's asking us to include it into the CIP.
And the sidewalk parking.
Oakwood sidewalk is.
What we're expected to pay out of our.
I, I, but there's nothing in, for potential funding source, we should add the grant in there.
Yep, that would be the small communities, urban.
Right.
Yeah. That's from, actually from Genesee County.
And what's the name of the source?
Is it?
Uh, I think it's urban communities or small urban, is it rural urban, urban?
So we don't know.
We do, it's just, we've got. Is that, do you remember, was it two eighty-five?
I don't, I'll have to pull out the file.
I think it was two eighty-five.
Twenty-five dollars?
I'll update it.
Two, two hundred. Hundred eighty-five thousand dollars, so we're gonna block ourselves.
Yeah.
Sidewalk.
A block.
That's high by five times.
Is there anything else that needs to be added?
But we need to make sure we have that money available, buddy?
Well, I think it would be.
This is under streets?
No, it's under sidewalks.
Sidewalks in park lots. It's on the back of one of the pages.
It does already say Oakwood sidewalks, it just doesn't have any placeholders.
And CIP sidewalks.
Sidewalks in Carlisle?
Yeah. So where it says Oakwood sidewalk.
It says Oakwood sidewalks, but it doesn't say how much we're stuck in one that's project is.
Just to jog the memory.
Just to.
Yep.
I wanna love.
For Oakwood?
Yep.
And it's urban grant?
I just don't remember what our matching amount was.
And it's for two eighty-five thousand?
I think so, I'll have to pull the file.
That's what's stuck in my head, doesn't make me. But I don't know if that was the total or if that was their matching, that's why I said don't write it down, two eighty-five is somewhere.
I also suggest that we need to update all of the estimated years because obviously some of these years are already passed. Many projects aren't completed, so they need to be revisited.
Specifically for the equipment facilities and streets?
Do you?
Only both.
Um, well, I mean, how much, uh, no, east of Church to Rose and Edwards are gonna do still yet in the twenty nineteen to twenty twenty year.
Right.
It's not, is that not necessarily when you're gonna do it, it's when you projected to do it?
Proposed, it's fiscal year is what it says.
I know, but.
And right now, we got like two eighty-five thousand in there and a scrap target grant is proposed funding, and I don't think we have a scrap target grant.
As long as we haven't incurred back.
I'm, I've been told that that's gone.
It's given. It's not enough.
So, what I'm saying to you is in some of those things, and I'm not sure how they replace, when they replace there, but it's worth leaving the date in, cause it's a reminder, you planned to do it back here and you haven't done it. If you change it to a new date, there's nothing that tells you that you're not on course to get to it. I mean, it's kinda like what we look at with equipment and stuff, we've got replacement schedules for all the equipment with, with the DPW. But we haven't replaced anything in how many years, and so it's like ridiculous, you know? We should have a, a new truck every three years, it's been ten years since we've done a truck.
And actually, that's another topic I wanted to bring up.
Last year, we don't have it yet.
Yeah.
Okay. Is this still on your capital improvement?
Yes.
I was.
Jump right in.
Um, yeah, another thing, when I was looking this over, I got thinking about looking at this, and this comes before council and stuff like that, and, and if I was to propose and present something like this, like within my organization to, uh, you know, my management for approval and stuff like that, I would wanna have some additional supplemental. Information along with this, like for example, the streets and the equipment in particular, I know that, and even the sidewalks, I know that in the past we have done. Uh, you know, our DPW crew has done assessments on the street conditions and rated them and stuff like that, and that's really, I, I think valuable supplemental information that should be. Uh, maybe included as appendices to the capital improvement plan to show, hey, this, these were assessed in this year and this was the conditions that were, were rated. Uh, so that they would help put these numbers in this rating and this priority and, and the years selected to do them in some kind of perspective based upon the actual condition of road, so it'd be nice to somehow incorporate those assessments. And if those assessments have changed, maybe we need to go back and revisit some of those and maybe reassess some of those road conditions, see if anything's changed, but I would like to see those, that road assessment as being another piece that's included with this capital improvement plan for reference. Uh, same thing with like our equipment replacement schedules, I'm assuming we have some, I've talked about this in the past, I don't know if I've said anything specifically since you've been manager, but I know in the past I've said, hey, we need to have some kind of, uh. We call it in our business life cycle management, hey, you have any asset or resource, it has a certain valid life cycle to it, you purchase it, it's brand new, you use it over so many years, it gets repaired, but at some point you plan to replace it after so many years.
It's everything we've got.
Yeah, and that also, I think, in terms of the major expenses in our, in that equipment plan, that life cycle is also valuable reference material when you're looking at this plan and looking at that life cycle and see, oh wow, you're right, you know, that we're, we're already three years past the life cycle where we were supposed to have replaced it, so that's valuable information in being able to judge, you know, what year and how to rank and set those priorities too. So how, how would that look, and how, where would it begin, and any idea? Well, like I said, we have this plan, which is an Excel spreadsheet, but, you know, in terms of a total, like if we had a, you know, actual document, I'd say this would be part of it, and then you would also have supplemental information to say, okay, this is supplementary, our equipment life cycle schedule, replacement schedule, and this is our road assessment, and this is our sidewalk assessment showing the conditions of roads and sidewalks, and this is the basis for why we think these need to be done in this order of that timeframe. So in other words, this is a skeleton that needs to be fleshed out. Yeah, those sorts of things help to flush it out.
Or a report.
When we come to budgeting process in the village, I think this is a good starting point, but the justification for why do we need to spend this much money over this time? That's where it helps support the justification and, and I think it's also good reference information, if citizens ever question, say, hey, how come you're, you know, you, you haven't done this one, but you're spending money on that, you know, we can go back and say, hey, this is our budget, this is how much money, the reason that road is not getting done, but this one is, is for these reasons, and here's our assessment, information backup, you know, what we're doing.
Good point. Just, and I agree with that, I think just, uh, but those explanations sometimes can get way carried away, most of the time it can be, for most of these, it's just a short, one line, you know, this, this equipment is failing here, there, there, or we need it because of this, it's really, really quite simple, but I agree, it, it's really handy to have that. Especially for the ones that are trying to manage it all. Give some, some power to go with.
I was just gonna say, one of the cool things about the redevelopment ready community certification is that we can receive assistance with the creation and, um, the updates and everything else with our CIP or our master plan, things like that. So that's going to come into play as we work along the process, they assist with all of those items.
You call it redevelopment.
Ready community?
Ready.
Shovel. Yeah, so, um, yes.
It's like shovel ready projects.
Right, well, it's, it's having your community marketed for the correct fit businesses that will come into that, yeah. So in order to do that, each step of the process, we have to be ready in order to be approved for it, so, um, that's one of the things that they provide assistance with, which is really cool. Check it, go through our master plan, go through our CIP, reference and all this and, so they go.
And on the subject of planning for replacement of equipment, that's standard thing, as I mentioned before, I guess. And that the federal agencies do, um, they, like, pickup truck, and they say, okay, a brand new pickup truck, we have to replace this in whatever many years, five years, six years. Some of my drove were like, um, twenty-six years old or so, and had to wire them together, they don't do that anymore, they used to do that back then. So yeah, as soon as you buy one piece of equipment, you start putting in your budget and build the replacement over time, over that, whatever the time period is.
Yeah, just budget it out for, spend it for, spend it for your time, so.
Yep.
Actually, it's not real complicated stuff, I figured it out.
And we'll come, we'll come so far with it, we're getting there.
Right, but that's, you know, that's a real obvious need for this plan, budgeting the replacement.
We'll just leave it on the table, thank you.
Alright, so.
I'll try it tomorrow probably.
And the other thing then, our capital improvement plan. From, you know?
Okay.
Uh, discussion items, who wants to go first? Yes, ma'am?
Um.
No.
The new hire, I met him, I forgot his name, some DPW. Scott McCarter, is that?
He's a relative, so.
Okay, alright, I, yeah, I met him.
Just a warning.
With Bob, okay, cool, so anyways, yeah, I think that's great, and is Pete gone now?
Yes.
He is done, okay.
Yeah, for life.
As of that, I'm on Friday.
As of Friday.
Oh, as of last Friday, cause I saw.
Scott actually started?
With him, cause I saw him being.
He started last week.
Yeah, oh, oh yeah, cause I just met him and, very nice, that's what I was gonna say, and if you haven't met him, he's very much.
So did you help with some of that?
I had no idea he was related, okay.
Did you help with some of that street plan, sidewalk plan?
Okay, and then the other thing I, I just want to mention to you guys was, um, there's this grant called Safe Routes to School, there are many grants that happens over here. Um, has to go through the school district, and last year I went in, sat down with Dr. Outlaw, had a long conversation, gave him all the paperwork, this year I just sent it to him. So, um, they got, they fail to do it every year, um, so that would be awesome if just one time they go for it, um, they could help any of these sidewalks that children walk on from village to get to school, those grants would cover that, they would, um, cover traffic calming, signs, anything to do with kids walking or bicycling, they would put in the lanes for painting for bicycles and whatnot. But next year, I'm really, I'm gonna start it early and really, I mean, like, depending on what happens in November, um, really try and get him to do the safe routes to school, cause I, I copied you two, right? I don't know, did he call you guys?
And he sat down with Bill and they were discussing the, like, the crossing and everything like that.
Right, the crossing. Yeah, I talked, yeah, I talked to him during that too.
And the facilities to go through it, and, yeah, so him and I had a good conversation about it with my kindergarten walking to school and.
Yeah.
No, no sidewalks and things like that, so, yeah.
Yeah, just letting you know, I tried to push it two years now, so. Next year's gonna be a big push, and maybe Granger might be a, a nice target.
Set for meeting now.
Be awesome.
Actually, not to put a little bit of a dent on it, but I believe all those grants only apply when you have sidewalks on both sides of the road.
And we have that.
On Granger?
I don't have it on.
No, you just said it on the.
Right.
So would they have to be a cooperative township, village effort to put them on?
You cannot, because it's not a township road, it was a county road.
It's a county, yeah, but in the village, we can't.
And then the county will have to be the one to do it.
The county has put in sidewalks?
On the count, on the county road?
On county road.
Okay, so we can't even put a sidewalk along Granger, or that has to be counted by that?
Same thing with Oakwood. If you discussed with the county? That's how it was with, with Oakwood too, we were talking about putting it on the other side of the road, well, that's, I mean.
But I mean, on the village side of the road, we can't do it, the county has to?
No, no, I, on the counties, on our side, I don't know, it's a county road.
That's what I said, cause the north side of Granger is.
Is village.
Village, the south side would be township.
You have to give it permission, but you can do it.
We talked with them.
Yeah, uh, that's what I said, is if we had both sides of Granger, half that would be township, half that would be village, yeah, we might need county to work with the county for the, I don't know.
Anyways, I was just giving that away idea, I didn't want to go into sidewalk discussion.
That is all.
I'm sorry.
Who else has something?
I'm done.
Who else?
I do. Um, just a reminder, well, it's not a reminder, it's an update, because it's changed and you didn't get your email yet. Um, our March thirtieth, thirty-first at seven PM professional development is now the redevelopment ready community webinar, it is not the, okay, well, one that we had on your calendar, same date, same time, slightly new information.
And it will be here.
And it will be here. It's, you will get an email, we just kinda made that conversation last night, yep, it's already, like I said, it's already on everybody's calendar, it's been on your calendar since last year, but we're changing the topic. Um, the other thing is, I don't think we've had this discussion or not, and any further on that, we talked about it in November, the spring joint meeting is the planning commission's responsibility, um, summer is village and fall is DDA. So, we don't have any discussion on that yet, and that is spring. Um, one option I'm just throwing out there is we could use the April professional development date if we would like to, because everybody already is available, that day knows that's coming, if you would like to use that data, no problem.
The twentieth?
Changing the topic. April.
Twentieth?
Sure.
Right, on Monday?
I'm just throwing it out there, that if you would like to, it's available, or even, I don't think we have anyone.
What did you do for your, um, last one, when you did your joint meeting?
They did the plan, they, they did the master plan.
And where'd you meet? Okay.
For planning commission, you're talking?
Um, yeah, there wasn't, and when you did your joint, I wasn't there at that time.
Yeah. It was, they did, they did, the fall, they switched, DDA did spring, they did fall.
Okay.
Now they're sure you guys are DDA live.
So it says on this calendar, well, the board's on it. It says seven thirty AM, DDA on the twentieth.
Yeah, that's a different meeting, that's in the morning.
Obviously. That's not what we're talking about.
No.
I, like I said, it was just simply there already was a placeholder, you can pick any day of any month you want.
Professional Development Detroit versus Comcast.
How are Monday nights?
Comcast?
Yeah. So, anyway, just in general.
Mondays are good.
So it would need to be.
Other than council Monday.
Yeah, and the council's the following Monday. May or May 25th?
No.
Um, in general.
May 25th, I teach at.
You could also do, I'm just saying in general, it's, July is village, cause they do the budget one in July, so you just don't need to do July.
We could do that.
And the other.
No.
And I can.
These, it's a webinar.
So what, what is our?
That's March.
What is our topic?
I'm trying to read that.
Is that what the planning commission decides, or is it what's hot at the moment?
Whatever you feel is a joint, whatever you feel is important for a joint meeting for all three entities to be part of.
So maybe we add that as an agenda item for next, for the April planning commission meeting, is just define the agenda for our joint meeting?
I think.
That would I agree. So, you said redevelopment ready communities is what day?
March thirty-first, professional development day, it's already on your calendar, we're just changing the topic.
Nice, and it's a webinar somehow.
Yeah, yeah, DDA would, would like to see kind of everybody get a chance to see what the baseline's going to be for the information, Melanie for Planning Commission is going through the training and so is Dale for the village, so the all three entities working together and.
If you know what you're doing with that, talk to me, cause I've been trying to get with Matt and figure out.
Okay.
What's our guideline for how to approach this, and I don't have any idea where I'm going.
Okay, I'm, I did steps one through three, I'm starting on four and I was gonna meet with her here on four, I'll come in, I'll come in and talk to you tomorrow.
Okay. Don't come in first in the morning.
No, absolutely not, that's all I had.
Yeah.
Dave?
DPW has just did a great job with through this snow business, it's really impressively did a. It's really impressive, they did more, more than normal, I think. And they, they went over the top, they did a great job with it.
Always.
They were here from seven in the morning till ten o'clock at night. And at ten o'clock, I stopped and saw what they needed to eat or drink, and they're like, we're going home. And I said, if I come by one more time, we're at home. I mean, they did not stop.
Yeah.
Man, that news.
It's like election day.
Is he driving?
He was.
He's pulling snow?
He, well, he wasn't, no, not yet. They had him in the front end motor though, going down the middle of here and going down to the.
He's done a lot of that.
Yeah.
Working closely.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, they have it in the equipment, our.
Mary?
Uh, yeah, I did receive a invitation from Matt Jenkins regarding the Ortonville Chamber of Commerce is going to be
I forgot, that's right.
Uh, restarting, and there's going to be a reception at Real Estate One office on five to seven PM on March fifth, which is this Thursday.
Are you going? Because I was going to stop there, okay? You going?
What time you guys going?
I, I didn't know if everybody got invitation, I assume you guys probably did.
Okay.
Uh, five to seven.
It's an open reception.
I can go. Yeah.
And it's at the eight seventy-five South Ortonville Road, I think that's.
By McDonald's.
Yep, right by McDonald's, where you have to be careful pulling out.
Absolutely.
That would be a nice email reminder to council, if somebody doesn't mind.
Now, is this?
I'll just look between you and you.
And I don't want to talk about it, but I just want a yes or no. Is it confirmed that you ever started up or is it a discussion that you?
Informational. It was in Saturday's paper as well, so if, yeah, anybody's asking you questions, yeah, I should guide them to Jason, it would be.
Okay. Perfect.
But I think that is a very interesting development, I think it would be very good for us to support that.
And there's some, and there's some good folks that are setting that up and running.
Yeah, I think the crafts and Jason Call.
Call, yeah.
I think Jane Derry is involved.
Oh, is she, okay, yeah, it'll be interesting, I'll let you work that.
Yes.
Thank you.
And that was it, I just wanted to bring that up.
Okay. So. Do you have a, you need to give me a copy of this recent ordinance regarding our. I've never seen it except for it's reported in my paper. And so, there are a lot of things I might say about Park, but I'm not going to do, but there is one thing that needs to be addressed, I guess. And that is, that's fine.
Let me, let me ask you a question.
Okay.